Para el asesor, la traducción o prima el botón del globo. Would like to call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by trustee Reckler. I will now do the land acknowledgement. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chochino, Moakma, Carkin, Aloney peoples, and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. I would like to welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the Board of Education. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on agenda and non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone. We have changed the public comment format, which will now occur at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for one hour and includes any agendized item. The time allotted for each speaker has also been extended to two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak on Zoom, your hand must be raised before a public comment begins. No yielding of time or substitution of speaker is permitted. Dr. Hurst, can I have the roll call?
Absolutely. President Phillips here. Trustee Clerk Smith Folds.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can you hear me? Good afternoon, present.
Trustee Reckler.
Good afternoon, present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Good afternoon. I am in the room and logging into the Zoom, present. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Christian.
Yeah, good afternoon. Good evening, present.
Thank you, all present and accounted for.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hurst. On this evening, we have five items to discuss in closed session. The first item is anticipated litigation. Second, conference with labor negotiators. Third, public employee performance evaluation. Fourth, public employee discipline dismissal, release complaint. And fifth, student discipline. If anyone would like to present public comment on any of these items, there will be another time to present public comment on other items later on in the agenda, but specifically on these items that we are discussing in closed session. If there's anyone who would like to do that in the Zoom, please raise your hand now. Okay, I see one hand. Give you a little more time to raise your hand. And again, this is on these closed session items that I just brought up. You will be able to comment on other items or other matters in the regular open session. Okay, going once, going twice, three times, gone. We have one person, Viviana Milan Alioto.
Viviana Milan Alioto, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, I'm a parent at Valley View Elementary. And I have, now I have two students who are in attendance there in person. I did have three. Two of my children who attend have IEPs. And it has been an upward battle to try to get everything in their IEP honored. It's been frustrating, especially since the leadership that is lacking at this school is so vigilantly against parental input as well as following the laws of IEPs. And I am deeply concerned that current principal Ross will continue to victimize my children and continually not follow their IEPs. And this, she set the tone with my second grade child who attends, who no longer attends at this school due to so much resistance to different ways of thinking. And on top of it all, she even took it upon herself to even start recording an IEP meeting, which is against federal education law without any 24-hour notice or consent from any member of the team. I'm deeply concerned of this lack of knowledge of hers. And also, just in general, just this person should not be around children. And her lack of care and knowledge in anything is completely obtuse, tone deaf, and utterly horrible to work with. And I just want to put that out there.
This concludes our public comment for call session.
Thank you very much to the person who called in to share. With that, the board is going to recess in the closed session. And we will be back out to begin open session at 6:30. Thank you very much. Para el asesor, la traducción o prima el botón del globo. I would like to welcome everyone to this regular meeting of the West Contra Costa Unified School District Governing Board. The mission of the West Contra Costa Unified School District is to prepare students for post-secondary education and to be responsible, thinking, contributing members of our global society. We believe in public education as the most important function in a democratic society. We believe we must treat everyone with courtesy, dignity, and respect. Provide safe and nurturing environments in which to learn, teach, work, and participate. Serve our students by working as partners with our community to develop well-rounded, lifelong learners and contributing members of a global society. Take responsibility for our behavior and performance to ensure the highest possible achievement of all students, employees, and our school community. Provide equitable and essential communication and support for successful learning, teaching, working, and participating. Respect, celebrate, and welcome the diversity, uniqueness, and contributions of all members of our school community. The board members should not subordinate the education of children and youth to any partisan principle, group interest, or the members' own personal interest. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities on agenda and non-agenda items in person through the Zoom app and by telephone. We have changed the public comment format, which will now occur at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment will last for one hour and includes any agendized item. The time allotted for each speaker has also been extended to two minutes. If you are attending the meeting in person, you will need to submit a request to address the board form to indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item. If participating via Zoom, you will need to raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak on Zoom, your hand must be raised before public comment begins. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. Dr. Hurst, do we have a report out or ratification from closed session?
We do not.
Thank you very much, sir. We will now go to WCCUSD public comment. Once again, this is on agenda items and non-agenda items that are within the jurisdiction of the school district. If you would like to speak and you're in the building, please make sure that you turn in your speaker card. If you are in the Zoom and you would like to speak, please raise your hand now. Once public comment begins, you will not be able to enter the queue. In the Zoom, we have nine, 10 hands up. 12, 13. Thank you. 16. 17. All right, going once. Raise your hand if you want to speak. Going twice. Raise your hand if you want to speak. Going three times. Raise your hand if you want to speak. Gone. So the last speaker would be... There's a speaker on here named Valley View Elementary Needs, and I can't see. Actually, they're on here twice. So whoever Valley View Elementary Needs, can you please actually put your name in? I will give you just a bit. You're gone now. I'll give you a bit of time to put your name in. Wait just a second. You may have to... Whatever you're doing and putting your name back in, if you just want to put, so we don't have to wait that long. If you just want to put Valley View, I don't know if David Mogul is the person. But if you just want to, if that's not the person, when you retype your name back in, just please write Valley View, like dash Valley View next to your name, so we know it was you, okay? But right. Okay, you did it. Thank you so much. We see you. Cheryl Phantom is the last speaker. She is the last speaker in the Zoom. Thank you very much for doing that. I really appreciate it. So we are now going to start public comment. And we have one speaker in the building. That is Sheila Swift. Hello, Ms. Swift.
Hello, my name is Sheila Swift. And this is, I think it's my sixth school board meeting that I'm attending. The reason why I'm here tonight is to is to request that you reverse your decision about the vaccine mandate. Although I'm one of a few here, probably the only public speaker in person, it's not just me, but hundreds of other parents in our school district that are not okay with a mandate requiring children to get an experimental vaccine. The mRNA vaccines do not prevent infection and spread of the virus. In fact, the vaccines are associated with significant safety risks to our children, including myocarditis and even death. The Food and Drug Administration is now asking a judge to give it 75 years to produce data concerning the Pfizer and BioNTech vaccine. That's up to 20 years from a previous request. So it won't be until 2096 when the data will be released. The opinion that the mRNA vaccines are not experimental is not supported by facts. This is a huge difference between fully licensed vaccines and mRNA vaccines. Under U.S. law, emergency use authorization products like the mRNA vaccines are considered experimental. This means they cannot be mandated. And everyone has the right to refuse experimental vaccines without consequences. The Nuremberg Code, as well as federal law, provide that no human being can be forced to participate in a medical experiment. I'll send you all an email following up with the U.S. Code sections and with a link to a study from the New England Journal of Medicine about natural immunity. Thank you for listening to what I had to say.
Thank you very much for your comments. We are now going to move to public comment on the Zoom.
Our first public speaker is Joseph Glazer. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. So Joseph Glazer, grade seven history teacher at Hercules Middle School. Six year in the district. There have been many flaws with the tenure of our current board president, including but not limited to limiting public comment and unfairly silencing and cutting off other board members, including our student trustees. As well as the fact that I have a simple message tonight. Clerk Smith Folds needs to be the next president of the board. The board bylaws clearly state that the clerk, barring extraordinary circumstances, will be the next president. Not only that, but Clerk Smith Folds is objectively the best person for the job. She has the leadership skills and qualities necessary to be an amazing board president. She will make sure all voices are heard, and she will not let us down. And I would also be remiss if I don't say, I strongly support the vaccine mandate in our district. I'm incredibly proud that our district is putting health and safety first. I thank everyone who has supported it, all the board members, all the parents, students, educators, all the community members who have helped support this, and for everyone who is helping to make it a success. And we are working hard to make sure it's going to be a success so that our students are safe and healthy and happy and learning on campus. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Stanley Family. Please state your first and last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening. My name is Gemedy Stanley. I'm a parent of a student in Valley View, at Valley View Elementary. I want to thank the school board for hearing out the many parents who have written to you in regards to their concerns about the appointment of our current principal, Ms. Ross, and safety concerns, concerns in regards to students with IEP issues and shortages of support staff to our teachers. I I think as many of you have read from my emails, I am in support of hoping that you have all come to the conclusion that our current principal needs to be removed from our school since they have not created in, she has not created a a safe place for our students to learn and has not given parents confidence that she is providing an environment that is conducive for their learning. I hope that your decision will be disclosed to our, to the parents of this school as soon as you are possibly able to. We have been waiting very patiently to hear back on what your decision is. And thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Estela Miranda. You may unmute yourself.
Dear school board and superintendent, I have a few issues that are of concern and that I would like addressed either tonight or in the near future. Children were scheduled, will be scheduled to take finals either the week of January 7th or January 14th. If these children are not, if these children are not vaccinated and are transferred to Virtual Academy by January 3rd, how will they be able to complete their finals and get full credits? What is in the, what plan is there in place for students entering the Virtual Academy that have special needs currently that receive a daily resource class for their IEP? And Virtual Academy does not offer daily resource classes for special needs children. What safety net services do you have to offer in place for these children? What does the district plan to do to offer these children electives since the Virtual Academy does not offer electives for students requiring credits for graduation? What services do you have in place for vulnerable students who may rely on free breakfast and lunch programs? What alternative PE does Virtual Academy have other than just offer for them to self-track their own physical education? It seems to me that children attending Virtual Academy will not be getting the same quality education that it seems that other children will be getting from attending in-school instruction. I mean, the U, the West Contra Costa Unified School District does get state funding, which should provide equal education to all students, but I don't see that this is happening. It is also, um, wait, sorry. It's as though unvaccinated children are not, are being robbed of equality in school education. They are also missing out on activities that are important milestones in their lives. They are being segregated and taken away from their peers, plus being punished for not taking a vaccine that is still under EUA. This absolutely makes no sense, and each of you should be held accountable.
Your comment?
Well, EDC 4905 states that only C, California Department of Public Health can mandate vaccines. The school board has no authority to mandate these vaccines. Neither does DHP, local officials. That's it. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Lisa DeSbro. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, good evening. I'm Lisa DeSbro. I'm a former West Contra Costa School District teacher. And I would like to announce that all parents interested in protecting the rights of their students, medical decisions should look into the following website. It reads nomandates2021@gmail.com. Let me repeat that. The, I'm just reading here the mission and equity statement of the district. It goes as follows. Our mission, we provide the highest quality education to enable all students to make positive life choices, strengthen our community, and successfully participate in a diverse and global society. However, unvaxxed kids will be punished for choosing to chart their own medical future. The West Contra Costa mission statement is, will be violated by putting the unvaxxed students in Vista and alternative programs that lack school social activities, athletics, clubs, and the other positives that we noticed were severely lacking during our year of Zoom. You will be responsible for denying them full access as equivalent to the other students allowed to participate on campus. Please visit nomandates2021@gmail.com.
Our next public speaker is Lisa DeCastro. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, Dr. Hurst and board trustees. Oh, okay. Good evening, Dr. Hurst and board trustees. My name is Lisa DeCastro, and I've been a parent at Valley View Elementary for six years. Every single day, parents trust teachers with their most precious gifts, their children, to keep them safe, to ensure the best learning environment, to be their advocates. This trust and faith that parents have in their teachers does not magically happen overnight, but is the culmination of conversations, meetings, emails, and communication built beginning in week one of the school year. Parents also need to have the same trust and confidence in the principal of their children's school because it is this leadership that connects all of us, families, students, and staff into a thriving community. Relationships matter in every context of learning. You all know this, as leaders in our district, leaders step up with action and make connections to all families and students. Leaders also know when to step back and listen to all stakeholders, even when they're not involved. even when it's difficult or uncomfortable. Sadly, Valley View has been without leadership and is in survival mode. Instead of building bridges between us, the school community has been met literally with fences and walls. This has left our students and staff surviving and not thriving. You've read my emails and many others from our community. Please stand with us and take the appropriate actions to save Valley View. Let us rebuild and restore our community into a safe and nurturing school for our kids and teachers. We appreciate hearing from you as soon as possible. Thanks for listening.
Our next public speaker is Dawn Costner. You may unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. It pleases me to see that after 11 months of waiting, the board is finally acting on the CBOC application of former board president and CBOC Chair Tom Panis. As I've written to you all in the past, appointments to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee is supposed to be absent of any kind of politics. It's supposed to be about who can best provide the oversight of our $2.4 billion bond program. Who can best represent the taxpayers, many of whom will have to pay off these bonds for the rest of their lives? Mr. Panis is eminently qualified to serve on the CBOC, so I hope that this board will take appropriate action to reseat him on the CBOC. While I applaud your action with regards to this, his application, I have to wonder what kind of games are being played by the district with nearly $700 million left in the bond program? There are three other applications that have been languishing, waiting for your action. One has been in the queue for more than 15 months, another for 11 months, and the third, mine, for eight months. Your own board policy calls for 17 members serving on the CBOC, but the board has refused to act on applications. It's difficult to figure out who is responsible for this inaction. Is it the superintendent? Is it the facilities team? Or is it someone or all of the board? Or is there a conspiracy between several in this group? That is working very hard to assure that the taxpayers of West County have minimal oversight of their bond program? Where is the sunshine about this process? Where is the openness? Where is the transparency? The district has played a number of games over the past couple of years to keep the size of the CBOC down to only that, what is required by law, totally ignoring the board's own policy calling for significantly more representation. So do you all recall one of the admonitions in your special meeting mess last Monday night where a leadership associate strongly suggested that you follow your own rules? This would be one of them. There is speculation that a strategy of delaying the process has been happening until the district can impose some of their draconian conditions and a revised board policy that will help ensure that the district's shock collars will have unfettered access to the tax dollars entrusted to you all. When you all asked the voters to seat you on the board, did you tell them that you planned to ignore the oversight of their bond program tax dollars? Thank you very much.
Our next public speaker is Ellen Bilyeu. You may unmute yourself.
Yes, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak this evening. It seems like so long ago that I was waiting up until 2:00 AM listening to the trustees argue over the difference between the word intends and will reopen. And I am so thankful that the district committed to reopening this fall. I want to thank the staff and the administrators and the trustees and most especially the teachers for making that happen and for prioritizing a safe reopening of the schools for our children. I want to thank the city of El Cerrito for their tremendous work on the aftercare and I want to really thank the leadership of Dr. Hurst. I'm gonna butcher what trustee Phillips said at a recent board meeting, but I really do feel like we are in the best hands with his leadership in this district and I really appreciate his measured approach to correcting a lot of the struggles that our district has had. I want to commend the district for leadership on surveillance testing, for swapping vendors when that wasn't going well. My husband and I and my child are, are very appreciative of the vendor that we currently have. Sometimes we even get same-day results, which is amazing. And it feels really important to that safe reopening of schools. I also want to really thank the board for their leadership on vaccination, inviting public health officials to provide actual real data. And I'm not gonna bore you with statistics. I am an educator myself and I know how hard it is to come back. I will just say it is far, far, far safer to vaccinate your child than it is to have your child suffer from COVID-19. There are far more adverse events from having an infection of COVID-19 than there are from vaccination. And my six and a half year old just got her second dose last weekend and is incredibly thankful for Kaiser Richmond for providing that. I want to thank you to the trustees. It's very clear that each of you care very deeply about the children in our district. And while you have different ways of showing it, you are all deeply committed to the work. And I want to thank you for making public comment at the beginning of the meeting so I don't have to stay up till 2:00 AM to tell you how much I appreciate you. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Asada Wilson. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Actually, I think the timing is, is perfect for me to follow this comment. So I'm gonna use the phrase safe reopening. So if it was a safe reopening, then why do the staff at Richmond High cannot figure out what's going on with their air purifiers? Their filters? Why is it that we have to keep putting in work orders to get the filters replaced and they don't get replaced properly? But safe reopening, why are we short-staffed? If it's a safe reopening, why are myself and my fellow colleagues are running around and working too diligently trying to fill in for our colleagues that cannot be able to be in class or to compensate for the fact that we are short-staffed and we do not have enough substitute teachers? How can we have a safe reopening when we don't have enough security or enough staff on our campus to ensure that we don't have intruders come and enter and disrupt our learning environment? Also, on that note, as I forgot to mention, as I always do when I call into these board meetings, I'm also an educator at Richmond High School. I am a member of the Executive Board of United Teachers of Richmond. I'm president of Black Educator Network. I am also an educator who doesn't have any windows in his classroom and I am not the only one. I'm standing with my colleagues at Kennedy and State, wherever the school in the district that doesn't have windows in their classroom. So we have rooms with no windows and we're talking about safe reopening. I am also a teacher who was blocked by our very own school board president, Mr. Phillips, because I called him out on his unscrupulous behavior towards his fellow board members and fellow students. As a servant of the public, Mr. Phillips, you do not have the audacity to block someone from an email who works in the community as well as you do. Again, I am here to hold you all as a board accountable and do the right thing. Please. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Teresa Hardy. You may unmute yourself.
Hello, my name is Teresa Hardy. I am a Valley View parent. Thank you for replying to my numerous emails, Dr. Hurst and board members. Those emails were about concerns regarding our current principal. I trust that all of you have or will make the right decision to remove and replace our principal. This will allow our school community to heal and move on to thriving this year. I also want to say thank you for mandating vaccines. I've worked in a hospital the last two years during this pandemic, primarily in ICU. This virus is deadly to the unvaccinated. That is not an opinion, that is a fact. I'm hoping that we will also get some information to make sure that the unsubstantiated claims about vaccines don't go on record without any other comment, board, I would ask that you do that. I also wanted to say that, could we please, please change the public comments so that they are not at the beginning? It feels like a race. There are people who are not able to get on right away because of work or other commitments and then their voices are not heard. I, I just really want to advocate that this is not the best possible scenario. I know that it was originally intended to shorten the meetings. I have been on numerous meetings on Zoom and it has not significantly shortened the meetings. So let's revise that, make this open to everyone and continue to do the best that we can for our kids and our school communities. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Maisha Harris Gash. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening. This first thing I'm gonna say is not what I intended to say, but it has made me nauseous over several board meetings when individuals choose to use words like Nuremberg and segregated and segregation. When I was in the fifth grade in Nevada, I know segregation. There were two black students in that class. Within 48 hours, me and that student who happened to be a male black student, we were in two separate classes. So I know what segregation is. So I just needed to get that off of my chest. What I really called to talk about is that we're in the home stretch right before the holiday break. It has been intense. I'm feeling it. Students are feeling it. And I just want to say, be nice, be kind, be caring to people. Tell people that you appreciate them. And I'm talking from Bissell out to the Marina and to every campus in this district because this is, for me, this is love work. This is heart work. And so I love passionately. I've been doing this for 24 years and I don't know how to do what I do at 50%, even though there are times I'm like, Maisha, just stop. Back up. Don't do it. But that's not in my DNA. I love on purpose my students. I care about my colleagues and even those that I don't agree with. But I'm still gonna let you know that I appreciate you when you do something. I'm gonna tell you, thank you. I'm gonna be in tune to a number of people that I work with because I can tell when their body and their disposition changes. I need all of us, principals, Bissell people, Marina Way people. We have got to look out for each other and say, I see you. I care about you because this has been hard coming back to the site. I'm glad that we're doing it, but it's hard. And then in my last 15 seconds, specifically to my students. For those who have gotten vaccinated, it's great. For those families are still making decisions, I am not ever, ever, ever gonna make you feel bad if you don't do it because I'm still gonna love you. Everybody have a good night.
Our next public speaker is Isabel. Please state your last name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
De Los Santos? Hello?
Yes.
Uh, De Los Santos?
Okay. Percy?
Hi, yes, I'm showing up to the meeting today to support some parents' concerns at Valley View Elementary. They are neighbors, so I'm, I'm showing up today to support them. And also after hearing parents talk, you know, my, my brain goes, goes in support of the vaccine and then my heart, you know, feels for the parents who are stuck in these situations and you know, a lot of bureaucracy and a lot of this politics shouldn't belong in education. So you know, I just, you know, keep, continue to support all the kids that, you know, we can support them with fair education. We should. It's the right thing to do. And again, just, you know, my heart goes out to everybody during these times. The holidays are right around the corner, so you know, thankful to the teachers, to the parents, to the leadership and everybody. Happy holidays. You guys enjoy the rest of your night.
Our next public speaker is Jeffrey Bean. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening. I am Jeffrey Bean. I'm a teacher at Sanon Elementary where I've taught for the past so, almost seven years. This beginning of the year has been a difficult year. Students coming into the grade with skills that aren't where they would be if they had been in in-person school last year. Some students had, I think most students had to take some time to get acclimated to being in school again. And I want to thank my colleagues and also my principal for being very supportive during this time. Families have also been supportive. I'm happy whenever I hear a parent text me saying that their child will be in an hour late so they can get that vaccine. People are getting vaccinated. I think we're getting closer to getting back to a hopefully somewhat normal situation. One thing that has helped this year is the fact that last year I had 33 fourth graders in my class. This year due, due in part to the lower class size is in our contract. I have 20, well, 28 students. I lost one, so I have seven now. It's a lot easier to teach with 27 students. Easier with 27 than with 33. I think it could still go smaller. But it's, makes a big difference. And I'd like to encourage the board to prioritize employees and people going forward in the next couple of years. Class size matters a lot. And also having people for intervention matter. If you can get people for intervention work with students who need help in reading, that would be, that would be awesome. Thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
Our next public speaker is Allison De John. You may unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. My name is Allison De Young. I'm a parent at Valley View Elementary. This is my seventh year. I have two students. I just want to reiterate the letter that I sent to all of you earlier this week. I'm not gonna repeat all the points in the letter. I thank you for reading it. I thank you for those of you who responded. I know this matter was discussed during closed session, but I had to come tonight and speak up once again for a resounding request to immediately remove Valley View's principal, Petria Ross. Ms. Ross has demonstrated beyond a shadow of a doubt she is completely unfit for her role and is a danger and liability to our students, community, and district. She is unprofessional, incompetent, dishonest, and has exhibited a flagrant disregard for not only best HR and educational practices, but the First Amendment and the law. Thank you for taking this seriously and removing Ms. Ross immediately. To do anything otherwise would be unconscionable. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Pete Redditt. Please state your first name for the record. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening, board. My name is Paige Redditt. I'm a father in the district. And I just wanted to take the opportunity tonight to again, speak out against the COVID vaccine mandate. It would be wonderful if you all would just leave it as a normal medical choice like any other medical procedure. I think a lot of parents do not feel comfortable taking or having their child take an emergency use only authorized product. And also would like to wait and see long-term safety data from these products. It seems that the district's policies are more aggressive than most policies in the country as we've even seen with federal requirements being held up in court and stayed for being, you know, potentially against people's civil rights. So we just want to, the parents that are opposed to a mandate and support a choice simply want to reiterate those points and not be, you know, put in a position of bearing 100% of the risk. As we know, the manufacturers are completely indemnified from any harm. And we would be curious to know, you know, who is liable if anyone is injured? Is that the board? Is that, who is that? So, you know, we, we ask for you to provide options and we just don't want to see this carried out to its full conclusion. If many kids are, you know, put out of the in-person learning system, as we know, that's the best place for them, the safest place. You know, that's about all I have to say tonight, but thank you for your time. Thank you, board. Thank you educators and staff. You all are doing a great job. Thanks for listening and look forward to hearing the rest of your discussion tonight. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is David Murhium. You may unmute yourself.
Good evening and thank you for hearing me out. I wanted to bring the board's attention to the CDC director recommending that it is too early to vaccinate these young children. There's not enough data and the data being shown shows that children are not the ones infecting adults. It's actually the opposite. The contact tracing that's been done has shown that children get over COVID very easily unless they have comorbidities. Children do not transmit towards adults as adults do to children. Also, this is an experimental drug. You're giving these kids something that there's no idea of how it's gonna harm them. Something of this nature should only be given to those with poor mobility. People should have a choice. There are products in this drug that is experimental. There are products in this drug that is experimental and products that are from fetal tissue, which goes against people's religion and nature to have that ingested into their body. It's, it's almost like some religions and having feeding them something that they're not supposed to eat. It's, it's sacrilege. A Dr. Robert Malone, the inventor of mRNA vaccine therapy, the way they adapted to make vaccines, especially says, do not give this to children. I urge you, please, do a Smith-Fold set. Do more research. Hold up your mandate. Don't disrupt these students' school year. Give it till the end of the school year to make decisions going into the next year. All we have to do is give them a little time. The data is stacking up. The vaccine doesn't work. People are still getting sick. Thank you.
Our next public speaker is Angela Silver Lima. You may unmute yourself. Angela Silver Lima?
Oh, sorry, I was on mute. Hi, my name is Angela Silver Lima. I'm a parent at Miravista Elementary School. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. The Friday before break, Dr. Hurst sent out his regular Friday evening communication. And part of the communication highlighted upcoming winter concerts that families will be able to attend in person indoors at various middle and high schools. However, on the elementary level, parents are still not allowed to walk their students onto the yard for pickup or drop-off, which has created a hazardous condition, especially at our school. Sometimes young children are left waiting in the parking lot, waiting for older siblings to get out for twenty to forty minutes or longer. This is not okay. Secondly, we are without two portables at our campus. Four months into the school year, Mr. Freeze is telling us that our community will not have portables until fall twenty-twenty-two. This is unacceptable. One of these portables are supposed to be for our learning centers for students receiving intervention in IEP services. These services are not being received by students. There is no classroom. There is no staff. As well as our band class, which has been practicing outdoors. Please expedite the delivery of our portables and in the future, please do not add any classes without adding classrooms.
And our last public speaker of tonight is Cheryl Phantom. You may unmute yours. This concludes our public comment for tonight. Unfortunately, we cannot proceed with Ms. Cheryl as we cannot promote to panelists.
Thank you very much. Thank you to everyone who spoke, whether they were in person or whether they were, uh, in the Zoom. We are now going to go to agenda review and adoption. Um, I'm going to start though with Dr. Hurst. Dr. Hurst, is there anything you need to pull off of this or change or?
Yes, we like to pull item C seven. Is the job description for a school counselor, please.
Okay, do you want that item off the agenda?
Off the agenda, please.
Okay. Okay, um, now I'm going to go to the board. We have that one item that's off now, which is C seven revised job description, school counselor. Uh, the order that we're working with tonight is, uh, beginning with Trustee Reckler. Uh, Trustee Reckler, is there anything that you want to, to pull off consent?
Yes, I'd like to pull C eight. And I would like to pull C nine.
C eight and C nine, and this is for discussion?
Oh, no, actually, if they could come off, that would be great. I'm happy to discuss them though.
I'm sorry, say it one more time.
Uh, I'd like them to be taken off, but I'm happy to discuss them as well.
Okay, um, can we just discuss them? And then if there's an issue and we can, because then we could get clarification without the Hurst in front of everybody.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you so much. Um, Trustee Smith Folds?
Good evening. I would like to pull C eleven.
Okay. Okay, so I have C eight, C nine and C eleven. Uh, Trustee Christian?
I don't have, uh, anything to pull.
Mr. Gonzalez Hoi?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So Board, uh, this is our proposed work for tonight. And I'm just going to repeat what the consent calendar would be and I'm going to ask for a motion, uh, to adopt it. So, uh, minus C seven and then C eight, nine and eleven pulled for discussion. Can I have a motion to adopt this agenda with those changes?
I'll move the agenda with the changes submitted. Reckler moves.
Thank you very much, Trustee Reckler. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Reckler, seconded by Gonzalez Hoi. Board, we just kind of had, uh, the discussion, so I'm going to just ask for a vote, um, starting with Trustee Reckler.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes?
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Frigil, yes.
I'm sorry, is code here? No. Okay. Phillips, yes, uh, the motion carries. Thank you. Now we're going to go on to approval of minutes for September thirtieth. Uh, starting with Reckler, Board, are there any, um, changes to the minutes?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
No changes?
No change.
No changes.
No, nothing.
Okay, um, can I have a motion to adopt the minutes?
Some move.
Moved by Gonzalez Hoi. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Seconded by Christian. Board, any discussion? C nine, Trustee Reckler, can you begin the roll call?
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yeah?
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Frigil, yes.
Phillips, yes, motion carries. We are now going to go on to item B six, which is resolution number forty dash twenty-one twenty-two, authorizing the use of teleconferencing for District Board of Education meetings during the state of emergency arising from COVID nineteen. Dr. Hurst?
Yes, we have this item here, Board, uh, for our board members who are not here, uh, present in person. And what we understand from our attorneys is if we do have a board member that is not present, uh, then we're required to make sure that we publish their address. We don't want to do that, so we brought this back forward to the board so it could be approved uh, for that reason.
Trustees, any questions, starting with Reckler?
I don't have any, thank you.
No questions?
No question.
No questions?
Questions?
Dr. Hurst, can you please elaborate on publishing their address?
Yes, uh, what the attorney shared with us is if we do have a board member that is, um, remote and not in person, then what we are required to do is to make the address of that board member, uh, public uh, on the agenda where their address is. So if they want to show up to that location and they're able to do that. In checking with the board member, that is not something they want to do. So in that instance, we have to have this, um, in place, this resolution in place.
Board, is there a motion to adopt this?
I move to adopt this.
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Gonzalez Hoi, seconded by Smith Folds. Board, do you have any discussion, starting with Reckler?
No discussion for me. Thank you.
I don't have any discussion. I'm going to vote yes on this. I am the remote board member. There's also student trustees who choose to participate remotely. And I don't want my address published. And I think that this is one step closer to removing it completely, taking Zoom completely away if we vote no on this. So I believe that we need to keep having Zoom as an option for not only board members, not only student trustees, but for also our community as a whole. So I, did I say I would vote no? I'm sorry, I vote yes on this. I vote that we need to adopt this every thirty days. Thank you.
It's your turn. Oh, do I, tomorrow, do I need to comment on it?
You don't have to. No, okay.
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, I was just going to say that, um, I agree with, uh, what Trustee Smith Folds said. I think it's important to have Zoom, uh, be a platform we continue to use. And, um, I, I've found it very useful. Sometimes gas can get expensive, sometimes not feeling too well. Uh, there's reasons that, uh, board trustees or the public might want to use Zoom instead of, uh, attending in person. So I will vote yes as well. And encourage others to do so as well.
Thank you, uh, very much. You know, I have just a few comments on this item. Um, and for me, uh, my issue is, uh, philosophical. I do not have, uh, an issue or a problem with us having these hybrid meetings, particularly at this time where we have a limited amount of access to the building. And for different reasons, it's not expedient for some people, um, to be here. At the same time, so I don't, I, I don't again oppose us having these hybrid meetings at this time like we're having. At the same time, we worked really hard to get school reopened. And we told the kids and the families that they had to come back. And we told the staff that they have to come back. We told the staff that they couldn't work remotely. We said all of these different things regarding the requirements for people to be here physically. People complained about that for different reasons. People expressed that they didn't feel safe. And we said, come back anyway. And we require people to be here. And I was one of those people who required people to be here. And one of the things that's important for me, uh, as an individual is that I don't, I don't do things or ask people to do things that I'm not willing to do myself. And that I don't, um, and I definitely that I don't force people to do things that I'm not willing to do myself. The public can't see what I'm seeing because you're all on Zoom and there's not a camera panning the room. We are in a cavern. Right now, there's literally one member of the public here. All of the staff members have masks on. We are divided by Plexiglas. Everything that we touch, the staff wipes down. You almost have to have a bottle ram to get into the door. You have to sign up to even get in this place. You have to show that you have tested negatively within forty-eight hours or show proof of vaccine. This is probably the safest place in America. But this resolution, and I want to read one particular paragraph, and it's paragraph four of the resolve clause. It says, as a result of the state of emergency, the local county transmission rates and especially with the rise of the Delta variant, in-person board meetings present, and I am quoting, an imminent danger to the health and safety. I think it should say of, but an imminent danger to the health and safety of district community members and attendees. That is a quote. If it is not safe to be in this building, it is not safe to be on any of our campuses. Because this is about the safest place in America right now. Now, all of you know, because I've made it very clear that I support our schools being open. My kids go to school on their campus every single day. But I think, and this is my opinion, and I don't have any problem with folks not being able to be here sometimes for different reasons. But for us to adopt a policy statement that says it is, it is an, quote, an imminent danger to the health and safety of district community members and attendees for us to have these meetings in person. When I'm here and I could see what I'm seeing and it is not unsafe to be here, but for us to force children and staff to go to school every day, I think that is highly hypocritical. So I will be voting no, not because I do not believe that somebody who cannot be here, Trustee Smith Folds can't be here for whatever reason. This has nothing to do with her. It's a philosophical issue for me and I think it's hypocritical. So that said, um, that's my comment. Um, and we could call the roll call.
Reckler, no.
Um, Smith Folds, yes, for the simple reason that this is about its impact. Your philosophical response has an impact on the people on this, uh, in the Zoom. So Smith Folds, yes, for the reason student trustees address shouldn't be published. My address shouldn't be published. And if we want to make sure that we have a safe site here, we need to make sure there's a safe site everywhere. If that's the safest place in America, everywhere needs to be the safest place in America. And we've heard that it's not. And secondly, we need to ensure that I didn't vote for everybody to come back to school one hundred percent. I made sure I wanted to have options and we have an option. We have virtual school. So if we have virtual school, we have virtual board meetings. We need to have more options and more ways for our students to be educated. That's why I asked for very simply, simple access point, several different access points to education. And we should have several different access points to our community, including on this board meeting. So my vote is one hundred percent, yes, we need to keep the option open for all of us, including the student trustees and myself.
Thank you very much. We're not having a discussion period right now. Everybody got a chance to say their piece. Um, the next person is, um, Mr. Christian?
Are we voting or we just?
We're voting.
Commit.
Gonzalez, yes.
Frigil, yes.
Phillips? Is a no and all of our addresses are already public information. It's not a Is a no. And all of our addresses are already public information. It's not a secret. Mr. Christian, the vote is on you.
Christian, yes.
The motion carries. Next, we will go to our consent calendar. We've already discussed this, so there really isn't anything to talk about, but can I have a motion to pass the consent calendar? And what I will do is just remind you what the changes were. C7 is no longer on the agenda, and eight, nine, and 11 have been pulled for discussion. Can I have a motion?
I move the consent, I consent, I consent calendar.
Thank you, sir. Can I have a second?
Reckler, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, moved by Gonzalez Hoy, seconded by Reckler to pass the consent calendar. There is no discussion on this. Trustee Reckler, can you begin?
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, yes.
Frigil, yes.
Phillips, yes. The consent calendar passes. Next, we will go to the superintendent's report.
Can we bring that up, please? Tried to turn this over to staff to share superintendent's report. What we wanted to do is acknowledge the number of incidences that have been reported at school sites regarding safety. I did send out a safety message to the community, actually from our communications department. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate it. And we did a video just to share with the community a certain message around all these incidences that's been happening on our campuses. And I'd like to share with you the message that we are putting together and sending out. In the message, I said, safety of our students and staff is our top priority. Recently, there have been some online threats circulating on social media and through some of our school communities. As your superintendent, I'd like to share with you that the police and district staff have thoroughly investigated these matters and determined that these posts are absolutely false. I also shared in my message, word of thanks to all staff, students, and families who reached out to school leadership about these issues. Additionally, in the message I shared, we encourage any student or staff member who is experiencing fear about coming to school, or any sort of trauma, to reach out to their school leadership immediately. And then finally, in that message, we encourage families to speak to their children about the dangers and consequences when posting to social media, and to be selective and careful about what you post. So I wanted to just start off the superintendent report by just sharing that message that will be going out this today, this evening. Also want to share with the community for the next board meeting scheduled for the 15th, that we will be presenting the first interim report. And I just wanted to just share with you, in that report, you're going to see a negative finding for us. And just wanted to just make sure that the community is aware of that. A negative report is just simply means that the district is projected that they are not able to meet their financial application obligations in the current or the next fiscal year. So wanted to share with the community that report is coming up. It will be our first interim report, and it will be for the next board meeting. And with that, I want to share that the superintendent report is going to be administered and reported out by staff. And I'm going to turn it over to the staff for the first slide. Thank you.
Good evening, board and community. So we wanted to start by laying the foundation. When we talk about the vaccine mandate for students, how many students are we talking about? And where are those students? So then in the next two slides, you can see that our total numbers of students ages 12 and above is 12,144 students. If you go to the next slide, you'll see the breakdown by grade level and by school. I understand there's also an ask to see not only the totals by school of eligible students, but also the number vaccinated, fully vaccinated by school. So we will certainly provide that on Friday in the Friday memo. You go to the next slide. What you'll see is the data that we have currently in Power School. So in Power School is where we are capturing students COVID vaccination status by way of the information that parents or students upload into the parent or student portal. So at the very bottom is the total 12,144 students. Of those 12,000 students, as of Friday, December 3rd, we had 3,417 students fully vaccinated. I'll also share that that data changes daily. So as of today, today is the 8th, we have 4,003 students fully vaccinated, verified in Power School. The questions that you see below, fully vaccinated, one dose, none, meaning not yet vaccinated, but intend to, no plan for vaccination, and medical exemption are all of the questions that are included in that Power School form when a parent or student fills it out. So there, according to our data in Power School, 45 students will not be vaccinated, and five with medical exemptions. Think also, just lastly, important to note here is that, as I said, the numbers continue to rise every day. At this point, as of Friday, December 3rd, we still had 8,344 non-responses. So those are students where we don't know the status, and we continue to work on those. As of today, December 8th, we have a total of 7,739 non-responses, or 63.7% of our eligible students. Next slide, please.
So our families and students have two different ways for providing us the proof of their vaccination status. One way is for them to go directly into Power School, and there's a link where they can upload that image. If that is not, does not work for them, they can also bring a paper copy into the school site. And our vaccination verification team is picking up those paper copies and supporting families with uploading that information into Power School. We have a team of 10 medical assistants who are going through and reviewing the information that is uploaded into Power School and are verifying what has been uploaded. If what is uploaded is not proof of full vaccination, that information is being shared out with school site teams who are following up with families. We want to ensure that families understand what verification is acceptable, and also what their options are, what the educational options are depending on their vaccination status. Next slide, please.
Good evening, trustees and members of the public. This is Ryan Phillips, Communications Director. So this slide covers some data from our Community Engagement Department on phone bank outreach. Thirty-nine SCOS have been regularly calling families who have yet to upload their students' vaccination card. This data is from calls made before December 2nd. So 66% of parents informed us they will upload their card digitally. 30% said they would bring the card to school, and 4% said they would not be vaccinating their child. Next slide, please. So I'm going to talk about our communications camp campaign. We develop messaging toolkits for principals, teachers, and families that include editable messages and resources to share, as well as answers to frequently asked questions. We have sent out messages to our families through robocalls, emails, and text messages. We've also sent out targeted robocalls, emails, and text messages to families who have yet to upload their students' vaccination card. We've also emailed secondary school students through their WCCUSD email address. We partnered with UTR on the teacher toolkit, which they help distribute, and with the Parent Leadership Council on the family toolkit. Dr. Hurst and district leadership have spoken to community groups and governing bodies, including the Hercules City Council, Healthy Richmond, the Korematsu PTSA, OESA and Lifelong Forum, MDAC, and Concilio Latino. We have promoted vaccination clinics through community messages, the district website, and social media. I have some data on our messages and promotions I'll be sharing with you later in the presentation. We have created digital tools, including webpages, instructional videos from the IT department, an email address to answer questions, and an FAQ page we update regularly. Last week, we conducted a phone survey of all families who have yet to upload their cards. I'll be sharing the results of that survey with you later in the presentation. Last week, we also announced a district-wide raffle for anyone who uploads their vaccination cards, which I'll also be sharing more with you later in the presentation. Next slide, next slide, please. Here's some data on our messages. As of last Friday, we have sent 14 community messages about the mandate since it was announced. These numbers represent the total number of messages sent to WCCUSD family members. Please note that this also includes a secondary point of contact for many households, which is why you're seeing so many messages. As of last Friday, we've also sent four targeted messages to families who have yet to upload their students' vaccination card through text, email, and robocalls. Next slide, please. We also sent emails to all of our student email accounts, reaching over 2,000 students per grade in grades seven through 12. We sent students instructions on how to upload their vaccine cards and information about the raffle. This slide also covers the number of students who receive messages by their grade. We help promote vaccine clinics through our newsletter, website, and social media channels. Here's some data from our social media posts. You'll note that there were more posts on Instagram because we were posting a lot of photos and flyers, which perform best on that platform. Next slide, please. We sent a phone survey to all families who have yet to upload their cards, their vaccination cards. 523 families responded to our English survey, with 82.6% indicating the intent to submit their vaccination card by January 3rd. 129 families responded to our Spanish survey, with 81.4% indicating the intent to submit their card by January 3rd. Next slide, please. Last week, we were very excited to announce a district-wide raffle for all families who have submitted their vaccination cards. There are two upcoming raffle dates, so any vaccination card submitted this week, by the end of the day on Thursday, December 9th, will be eligible for both drawings on December 10th and December 17th. We have lots of exciting prizes, including a laptop, $500 gift cards, and $150 gift cards. Just a big thank you for the support from, from our partners, the West Contra Costa Ed Fund, DND Security, and our district unions.
Good evening, board, parents, and community. On our form that parents completed, we had parents identify if they will not vax. Forty-five indicated, or checked the box, that they will not vax. However, we dug further into that data to then call all of those 45 parents. And we found out that there are parents who have stated that they will either, 17 left waste messages in which they said, we will return their phone calls. There are two who have IP's in which we need to determine what will happen with them. We have four that stated that they were unsure. We have seven who will get vaccinated after all. We have one who stated they will leave the district. And then we have 13 who wish to attend Virtual Academy of the 45 who indicated that they will not vax on the form that was submitted. Next slide. Of that, we also have, we went further to identify what some of our educational options are for our students. Our first option is to continue hiring from Edjoin and ND, which is currently happening. We also wanted to ensure that we named some of the implications for that, which could be the fact that we are currently in a teacher shortage, there's current vacancies in our schools, and we have a current waitlist at Vista Virtual. Another option is to move teachers who will not be vaccinated to Vista Virtual. The implications for that would be that there would be implications to the master schedule at our school sites if we move teachers. Teacher staff have personal exemptions, so they are not required to move. And there are current vacancies in our schools. Next slide.
So I'm presenting on the staff COVID vaccination status. We pulled this data on December 2nd. Our employees number 3,818, and that includes substitutes and athletic coaches, as well as our permanent regular employees. We have a little bit under 2% that have submitted a religious exemption. We have 85% that have submitted a COVID vaccination status, and we have 12, almost 13% that have not provided documentation yet. Out of the 13% is listed on the right, the total is 488. We have just a small number of management or adult ed. Classified substitutes is a little over 100. Classified is almost 200. Our certified substitutes is 48, and our certificate staff is 128 that have not provided proof yet. We are receiving vaccination statuses, proof every day. We are uploading that information into ESS each week, so that employees can see that that's, that the proof that they have provided is being documented. We are continuing to do email campaigns every other day, and, and we are receiving many on paper in the office and updating that. We're also performing an audit to make sure that the documentation we have received online is accurate. Next slide.
This concludes the superintendent presentation. We'll turn it back over to the board president for questions.
Thank you very much. Trustee Reckler, do you have any questions? I'm gonna, we gotta, so let me just say this really quickly. We have this is actually a long agenda. We have seven action items. There's four for action. There's three things that were pulled, and then there's also a discussion item. So this is a really long agenda. So I am going to ask you guys, if you can, to please limit your questions to four. If you have more than that, we'll try to go back and do one more round. But we have a lot of stuff that we actually have to get through this evening. So trustee Reckler?
Thank you. So for the vistas, both concepts, simply, how many do you think are enrolling due to not being vaccinated, Ms. Martin?
Well, currently, based on the 45 that checked, they will not vax, it's 13.
I'm sorry, so it's just 13? I'm sorry. So it's just 13?
That is correct.
Okay. And then how many is dis-enrolling? It's just one?
That's correct as well.
Okay, thank you. And then what, what might be a plan or has anybody thought of a plan for on January 3rd when there's several thousand cards that have not been uploaded?
I think what we're doing, trustee Reckler and for all the board, really, is we have been talking about this and what we're doing is just bringing data to the board and really wanting the board to have a discussion about this. I think we understand the current reality, which is why we also presented implications as well. We understand our shortages. We understand where we are with the numbers. But really at this point, we believe it's a opportunity for the board to really discuss and provide some feedback for us on next steps.
And, and do you think you can accommodate those 13 students at Vista?
Currently, there is still a waitlist at Vista. We are moving students off. We should have 144 students moved. Marin, who's over enrollment and recruitment is rapidly trying to meet with those families and get those families moved over to Vista Virtual. However, there are some challenges with the, the grade level of demand versus the teacher that has space. So for example, there are. There's a higher demand for other grades, but the eighth, but the eighth grade teacher has 63 spots, but the demand is only 26 applicants. And so we need to either, we need to basically hire more younger grade teachers because the demand is higher in our younger grades versus our eighth through 12th grade.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Thank you, trustee Smith Folds.
How many people are currently on the waitlist? You said you're moving 144, but what's the total on the waitlist, Ms. Martin?
There are currently 262 active students on the waitlist.
Thank you for that. And then we looked at the slide three and four. And slide three and four, it simply told us, if I'm understanding it correctly, that for example, Hercules High School has a total number of eligible vaccinated students of 758, correct? Am I reading the slide correctly?
You are, yes.
Okay, so, but it doesn't tell us of the 758, how many of those students have been vaccinated? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And that's the information we're working to get, correct, Ms. Logan?
Absolutely. We can provide that through the Friday memo.
Okay. Ms. Martin, knowing the number of students who are actually vaccinated, then can't we anticipate the number of kids who may have, who may have to go to virtual school because we just subtract?
Yes, or it could be an implication that they just have not uploaded the information. So we haven't made any conclusions. We really just wanted to focus on the number of forms that were completed and the parents who actually stated they will not be vaccinated. And even with those parents, we still went back and found that some changed their mind, even though they indicated originally that they would not be vaccinated.
Thank you for that. And then can you kind of give me a better understanding of the January launch and the reorganization of classes in schools at virtual school? So if, for example, if a teacher working at virtual school gets five new students in to their classroom, right? They, five new ninth graders come in. What's the reorganization of that class? Because they're going to be at two different curriculum levels. One, the, the virtual school curriculum is moving differently than the brick and mortar school curriculum. So have we built in time for adjustment in there to get everyone on the same page? Is there a time for review or acceleration or de-acceleration? Have we thought about what that looks like?
That's something that Ms. McCormick is currently working on. There is always an orientation period for new students and for new families to understand their schedule, to ensure that they receive their Chromebook because there's also a process in which once you're leaving your current school, you have to return that Chromebook and receive a new one from Vista Virtual. So there's a process and normally it takes about a week for you to fully be enrolled. And during that week, there is an orientation process and students become acclimated to where we are, where they are at Vista Virtual, but it does not necessarily mean that they are aligned in their curriculum. So there will be an adjustment period that Ms. McCormick and her teachers are working through.
Okay. And then is there also an adjustment period from, what does it look like to switch from one location, a brick and mortar to virtual school when it, looking at Power School, right? What does that look like? Because then there's another access to, I'm no longer a teacher at, or I'm no longer a student under this teacher. Now I'm a student under this teacher and that teacher now has to get access to my Power School that, you know what I'm saying? What's that adjustment look like? And have we worked out those kinks yet? So it's a seamless transition.
Um, I think I can answer this one. So I think we've worked out some of the kinks. It certainly is a process. So the teacher, as you said, is identified, is assigned the classes in Power School. The students are then assigned to the, that teacher's class. And then there's an integration that happens between Power School, Clever and any of the other online learning applications. The vast majority of those applications are through Clever and that sync happens nightly. So there's generally a 24-hour delay from when that information is input into Power School. There could be a longer delay for other online learning applications, but it's pretty quick at this point.
Okay. And then I have actually lost count. So I'm just going to go ahead and ask this other question.
Trustee, trustee Smith Folds, if it's okay with you, I have been counting, but we'll come back to you. So other folks can ask questions too, but I promise we'll come back to you. Okay?
That's fine. You can circle back to me.
Okay. Thank you so much. Trustee Krista.
Have any questions at this time?
Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you. I do have a few questions. My first one's for Mr. Phillips, Mr. Ryan Phillips. Mr. Phillips, what is the paper campaign that is being done? You mentioned a lot of different campaigns, but the, like sending paper to the homes, what is the campaign happening there?
I don't, in terms of our, our communications department, we, we haven't sent any paper items home to families. What we have done is we've, we've given principals printable flyers that they can have at school that then can be, that have QR codes that can be scanned to download information. That's, that's the printable resources that we've, we provided.
Okay, thank you. My second question is for you, Dr. Hurst. It's a follow-up from actually trustee Smith Folds' question. When we're looking at site-specific data and the schools that might need additional support or accountability, have we been looking at the lowest numbers and actually supporting those sites?
I'm going to refer to staff to see if the staff can answer that about the support for sites.
And the question is, for the, for the schools that have the lowest numbers of students vaccinated so far, are we looking at interventions for support of those sites? That's maybe a clear way of that question. Apologies.
There has been outreach that Marin has been doing and supporting with family and community engagement. He's been meeting with the scous to ensure, looking at the numbers of schools that have low vaccination rates, low submission rates to ensure that, so that chart that you were looking at, most of that work has been that outreach and that outreach has been to those schools in which you see low vaccination rates. So there has been more outreach at those particular schools. And that has been scouts calling families and then working with the communications department to ensure that we have incentives and raffles. And then we also, and on our website, have vaccination clinics and we do still have some vaccination clinics that are running at some of our school sites as well.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. My next two questions are for Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams, for the staff vaccinations, individuals who have not turned in their information, have we done a phone banking for those individuals as well?
We have not done phone banking, but we have been sending emails as well as sending physical letters to those employees.
And as a follow-up, my last question is also for you. Have we asked the direct supervisors of those individuals to speak with them and let them know that if they don't turn them in, they're going to be put in unpaid leave? Have we had, have they had that direct conversation?
No, unfortunately, just, I mean, it's a fairly large number, but I mean, we can get to that maybe in the next, I mean, we're, they're still coming in 20, 30, you know, every few days. And so we're just trying to keep that going. But yes, I think as it gets a little bit lower, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. That was my last question.
Mr. Trujillo?
Yes. My first question is, on slide 13, there is one student who will not vax in grade 13. What is grade 13?
That's our post-secondary transition program.
Got it. And then have people reported having issues uploading their vaccine card? And if so, how many reports of that, of that are there?
So trustee Trujillo, I can pull the data for you from our help desk system and get you actual numbers. And we can also look at the questions or concerns that we've gotten through the COVID email that we have. But I'll say in general, it's a relatively low number. And whenever there is an issue, we always say, feel free to just turn in your vaccination card, a copy of it to the front office and we can upload it on your behalf. So there is that option for folks.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, have you, I'm not sure if this will be for communications, but have you considered maybe hosting workshops for parents on? Well, I mean, I want nothing to be workshop, but I know during orientation time, usually you have parents fill out the yearly forms online at stations. Could we have something like that for the vaccine card or has it been something that's been looked at perhaps?
Sorry, trustee Trujillo, we were talking about the question. I would say that yes, we are working with our front office staff. Front office staff have also been calling families. We can talk more with our staff around being in front and trying to really get parents to turn in the information or helping families upload. I could definitely talk to my department about that.
Okay. Thank you. And then the last question was, why is there a religious exemption for staff but not students?
Currently trustee Trujillo, if you remember back September 30th and we presented the information to the board and we modeled it after a certain unified school district here in California. And we presented that to the board and we listened also to our health county medical professional, Dr. Farnatano. One, when you look at the model we modeled it from, they did not have that exemption for students that are religiously from personal exemptions. And then also, when the board approved it, it did not have that as well. And the recommendation from Dr. Farnatano was that we move in a direction where we did not provide the religious belief and personal belief exemption also. So that's what the board approved on September 30th. And that's how we move forward.
Yeah, thank you. Those are all my questions.
I have a couple of questions. Dr. Hurst, do you think we're going to make the January 3rd deadline?
So I'm going to just say, I think that's what I was really alluding to, looking at the numbers and the data. We're really close to the next board meeting, December 15th. That is our last board meeting right before the winter break. No, I do not.
Based on your belief that you, based on your belief that we will not meet the January 3rd deadline, what do you believe we should do?
So I think this is something that I sent to the board for us to consider, that we consider moving the date back and it's really our current reality. I had a conversation with one other board member about this as well. Certainly not something that we want to do or desire to do, but it's really our current reality, looking at the numbers and looking at the data. So the board considered pushing the date back. We did not discuss the date. However, if the recommendation was shared with me, my recommendation would be moving the date to align with what the governor shared.
Considering that the board actually voted on this, so took formal action and that there is now a actual policy adopted through resolution, are you prepared or are you preparing to bring a formal recommendation for the board to vote on at the next meeting?
Yes, staff has discussed, discussed that specifically and we shared that we would be bringing a recommendation, a formal recommendation at the December 15th board meeting.
Just to preview for the public, because this is a big topic and you can be as specific or as general as you want, but just so we put it out there into the atmosphere as early as possible, what exactly will you be recommending to the board? And again, you could be as specific or as general as you need to be because I'm not, I know this is all playing out in real time right now with us. What, as much as you can tell us now, what is the recommendation that you will be bringing to the board for the board to vote on next week? So the community and the board is mentally prepared for this.
I think one of the things we shared is in the memo, we talked about just the board's ability to be flexible in moving that date, that deadline from January the 3rd and moving that date to a later date. And the memo that I shared, again, generally speaking, does not mention a date, just a consideration, looking at the data, that we have that flexibility to move the date.
That concludes my questions. I know some board members may have some additional questions. So we'll go back through one more time. Board, again, we have a lot on this agenda tonight. So if you have additional questions, please limit the additional ones to four. I would greatly appreciate it. So we're going to start with trustee Reckler.
On one of the slides, it has a category for secondary home teaching. I forgot before. Thank you, student trustee Trujillo, for reminding me. What is secondary home teaching that has students in it?
A common hospital. So for students who have a doctor's prescription, they are unable to attend school for medical reasons.
Okay, thank you. And that's it.
Thank you very much, trustee Reckler. Trustee Smith Folds.
Dr.
Dr. Hurst, to be fully transparent, I'm a little, I gotta process what I just heard a little bit. But I do have a question, I have a couple of questions to what we're looking at now. If we look at slide, slide four, slide four says, Virtual Academy K through twelve, there is a eighty-two students are eligible to be vaccinated. Do virtual school students have to be vaccinated?
The answer to that, trustee Smith Folds, is that they do have to be vaccinated if they, if they choose to opt into coming in person. Because even though you have Virtual Academy, there are opportunities for students to come in person for different learning opportunities, for play dates at the school site, so there are different opportunities that are available to them. So although they choose to have virtual learning, they can opt to take advantage of some of the in-person opportunities, which many parents want because of the socialization with other students. So if you opt for that, then you do in fact need to be vaccinated.
Thank you for that clarification. And then if there are no scals at a school, who does this work fall on? Who makes the phone calls? Who does all the work that a scowl would do if you don't have a scowl at your school?
Your front office clerical staff, which that work has fallen on front office clerical staff, if they do not in fact have a scowl.
Thank you for that. And then, Ms. Martin, what are the virtual school caseloads? So you know that when we went back, we had the number of students per class was kind of capped at a certain number. What, does that number translate to virtual school? So is it only thirty-two, forty-three? Do you understand my question? Is it clear? Okay.
The contract language is the same for virtual school teachers as it is for in-person teachers.
Okay. And then my final question, and Dr. Hurst, I will be sending some more questions, but my final question is, we talked about Mr. Ryan Phillips, you talked about a raffle. Is that raffle only for twelve-year-olds and above? If they submit their vaccination card, is that for anybody who uploads their vaccination card? Because we have some students who are five to eleven who are vaccinated and uploading their, or I don't know if they're uploading their cards, but maybe that should be a better question. Can five, do five to eleven-year-olds upload a vaccination card, or is it just the portal? Is the portal just open for twelve and above?
Just for twelve and above.
So the raffle is only for twelve and above?
Correct.
Thank you for that. Those are the four questions I have right now.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Mr. Christian, do you have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions.
Mr. Gonzalez, who do you have any additional questions?
Thank you, I have two more questions for Mr. Ryan Phillips. Have we considered partnering with our city officials and PTAs?
Absolutely. We're willing to partner with any organization. We reached out to a lot of different city groups, or excuse me, CBOs, but cities and other groups we're absolutely willing to partner with, and we've got resources to share as well.
Okay, thank you. And then, how are the vaccine clinics being scheduled? Because not every school has had one. So how are they being scheduled?
So I just handled the promotion for the clinics. Ms. Ms. Martin, is that a question you can answer?
There was originally, the county was scheduling them in partnership with schools. What then happened was because of low turnout and because of counties wanting to switch to five-year-olds and above, they decided to actually move the vaccinations from being at our high schools to our elementary schools. And that is actually still scheduled with school sites. However, most of the county is just saying or telling schools that they will actually be at those schools to hold the clinic, so there's less work now on the school site to actually initiate or promote the vaccine clinic. So the county is saying, we will be at these schools, and they've set up their own schedule, and that's what's being promoted on the district website.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. My last question is for Dr. Hurst. Dr. Hurst, if you're bringing such a recommendation for the next meeting, are you bringing options for the board to consider? Or are you gonna bring a single recommendation?
I think our plan is to bring back the data. And then also, looking at the options that I shared with the board, I, I think we can bring back those options. But then again, I'll be explaining and staff will be explaining really our current reality. And I think a big part of what we bring back on December the fifteenth is where we are actually with the data. I think one of the pieces that really stood out to me in that memo was the comment that says, if we have an extraordinary large number of eligible students unvaccinated, so really it's going to be that number. So that's gonna really kind of help us determine what we bring back to the board, that number.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Trujillo, do you have any additional questions?
Yes, I did have one. Can students who are not twelve and vaccinated upload their cards onto Power School?
No, at this time, it's just for twelve and above.
Thank you. And my, my last question is, will that be looked into soon, or will that be available soon?
Trustee Trujillo, we haven't discussed that yet in terms of uploading and capturing the data for students below the age of twelve. So no decisions or timeline on that as of yet.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Trujillo?
Yes, those are all my questions.
Okay, thank you very much. I do not have any additional questions. Staff, superintendent, all, thank you for the report. We're gonna go on to item E one, which is employment agreement of interim associate superintendent of business and operations. And I just, again, I'm asking the board to be conscious that we actually have seven agenda action items, and we have one discussion item. So please be succinct and frankly, as brief as you can in expressing yourself.
Yes, we wanted to introduce to you the contract for our interim CBO. The NMCBO that we're presenting to you is certainly very skilled. I have had a conversation with the board members before, and since you have the resume as well, his name is Robert McIntyre. As you look at the contract, you'll see that it goes from November the twelfth through the end of the school year. Certainly, we believe that he has been working hard, certainly with the first interim. And in the contract also, it has specific things that he's bound to make sure that he does while he's here as well. And as you look at the contract, you can also see that it's comparable to what we have for our last CBO as far as compensation as well.
Dr. Hurst, can you just go over the, publicly go over the terms, particularly the, the money amounts and whatnot?
So the terms of the agreement goes from this date to June the thirtieth. Under the duties and responsibilities, we have in there fulfilling the first interim report, also managing the business services department, working on position control processes and procedures, advising the superintendent and board for the district's current projected financial position, also recommending to the superintendent appropriate budget reductions to address the district's structural deficit, and also to recommend appropriate staffing levels for business services. Compensation for the NMCBO is at a rate of a hun- one thousand four hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents per day, per diem, a hundred and eighty-two dollars and twenty cents per hour. I did mention that that is comparable to what our previous CBO had as well. There is a termination clause as well here for mutual consent, where the agreement can be terminated at any time by written mutual consent by the district and NMCBO. There's also provision for at-will termination of the interim, interim CBO. And those are some of the basic pieces of his contract.
Thank you very much, sir. Board questions, starting with Reckler.
I have one question, which is, is this the original contract that was posted on Friday?
This is not the original contract. We actually, after speaking with some board members, we made a couple of changes to this. So this is our contract that we want to present to the board.
Okay, and specifically, the changes are the date, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And what else has changed in this?
We actually used a different format, however, everything else is the same.
Okay, so just the format has changed? Is there anything else in here? I was not aware that something else was posted after I read it.
No, ma'am. Just the date.
Okay, thank you.
Smith Folds?
Dr. Hurst, could you please tell me, are we talking about the start date? I'm sorry.
That's the list to start date.
Okay. And what is the start date?
November the twelfth.
Okay, that was the start date. Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Christian?
No question.
Gonzalez, who?
No questions, thank you.
Trujillo?
No questions, thank you.
I have no questions either. Board, can I have a motion to approve this, or approve this contract?
Some of?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Gonzalez Hoy and seconded by Christian. Board, is there any discussion?
I just have a comment, which is, if you're gonna sub out contracts, if you would just please just drop us a note or something, just so that the board is aware of that. I read all the contracts and was just now surprised. So I'd like to with that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Smith Folds, do you have any discussion?
No comment.
Okay, I'm looking at faces. Trujillo, do you have any?
No, thanks.
Okay. Reckler, can you start the vote?
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, yes, the motion carries. Thank you. Next, we're gonna go on to item E two, certificated provisional internship permit. I believe this is Ms. Williams.
Good evening. So this is the provisional internship permit that is required to be an action item. This was created in response to the phasing out of the emergency permits, and it allows an employee agency to hire an individual who has not yet met the subject matter competency requirement needed to enter an internship program. And the employee agency must verify, which we have, that a diligent search has been made, and a fully credentialed teacher cannot be found. We ask for your approval for this item.
Okey-dokey. Board, any questions?
I do have a question about this.
Okay, I think you're the only one, so go ahead, Smith Folds.
Ms. Ms. Williams, we've approved these several times. How many are actually going through? Like, how many PIP requests do we have that are making it through your office, if that makes sense?
So we're, we need approval. I don't know how many total have gone through in the past few months, but as we hire new teachers from the start of the school year, they're all being approved. Maybe I'm not sure I understand your question.
Now, I think it, what you're telling me is that right now you don't have a running number of how many have went through, but all the ones that are going through are getting approved because we're approving this on the board bias, correct?
Correct, correct. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it, ma'am?
That's all.
Okay. Board, trying to assist, it looks like there are no other questions, so let's vote.
President Phillips, I'd like to move aside.
You did not have a motion. All right. Now it's been seconded by Smith Folds. Board, is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. Now let's vote.
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yeah.
Gonzalez, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, yes, the motion carries. Next, we're gonna move on to item E three, certificated board authorization.
Under ED Code four-four-two-five-eight-point-three, the governing board is allowed to authorize the holder of a credential in the following areas, multiple subject standard, single subject and standard secondary and elementary, with his or her consent to teach a departmental class in grades K through twelve, provided that the teacher has adequate knowledge of such subject matter. Again, this is required to be an action item, and we are seeking your approval.
Board, any questions? All right, seeing none, can I have a motion?
President Phillips, someone beside him.
All right, moved by Gonzalez Hoy, seconded by Christian. Board, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, trustee Reckler, can you please start the roll call?
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Trujillo, yes.
Phillips, yes, the motion carries. Next, we are going on to item E four, citizens' bond oversight committee. Appointment, Mr. Tom Panis.
Oh, I'm sorry. Tonight, we're bringing forward the application for Mr. Tom Panis to the CBOC for the position of senior citizen. Mr. Panis has previously served on the CBOC in twenty fifteen. Staff believes he'll make a great addition to the committee. Tonight, we're looking for your approval for a two-year term from December eighth, twenty twenty-one, to December seventh, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Board members, are there any questions? I see one question, Mr. Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you. Mr. Freeze, how many unfulfilled positions do we have open right now?
We currently have one of the mandated positions that opened, so there are seven positions that are mandated. We have six filled, this would be the seventh that would fill that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Phillips, I do have a question.
Sorry, my mic was on. Can you go ahead?
Mr. Freeze, when is the CBOC doing their elections?
I'm sorry, I missed that question. What is the CBOC?
When are they doing their elections? They, they hold their own elections. When are they doing their elections?
So at our next CBOC meeting on the, it's Monday, the, what is it coming up here? I'm sorry, I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Is it the thirteenth?
Thirteenth, they will be doing their elections.
And do you know, second question, sorry, Mr. Phillips, do you know how many people are no longer going to be on the CBOC currently? Or is there anyone timing out? Is there anyone made their statement that they're not coming back? How many people are they, you said they're currently seven people. Do you foresee all seven people still being on the CBOC? Or Mr. Panis will make seven?
I'm sorry, Mr. Panis will make seven. The terms of the current members in the CBOC, none of them are timing on December. I believe the next one that turns out is in the spring of twenty twenty-two. I believe the next one that turns out is in the spring of twenty twenty-two.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Board, is there a motion?
President Phillips, some of this item.
I'll second it.
Trahill, seconded by Trahill, moved by Gonzalez Hoi. Board, is there any discussion?
I have discussion.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
I think that it would be in our best interest to make sure that we are getting the applications to us in a timely manner when we, when we receive them, getting them to the board in a timely manner, so we can ensure that we're able to fulfill those spots, or at least have conversations about those applicants. I think that that's part of our duty to make sure that we have that role, Phil. So I just want to put that out there that I like it to come to us in a timely manner. Those that are eligible to be on the C B O C, applications that are eligible to be on the C B O C, need to come to the board in a timely manner. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Reckler.
I do, I have one other comment, which is, I think that there should be some time put into cultivating new members. You know, it's, it's important, we're building new schools in different areas that are going to have impact. And I think that there's an opportunity to expand the breadth and depth of the committee in the makeup. Thank you.
Okay. We're kind of jumping around. Just as we go through the rest of these tonight, if I ask if there's the discussion, if you do have it, just go in the order, try to go in the order that we're going on. So is there any more discussion on this item? All right, seeing none. Trustee Reckler, can you begin the vote?
Reckler, yeah.
Uh, Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Trahill, yes.
Phillips abstains. The motion carries. The net, the next item is item C eight, new job description, college and career counselor. Now, trustee Reckler pulled this item, and I think she had questions. So trustee Reckler, do you want to go?
Sure. So I would like this taken off the agenda. And the reason is very simple. I think it's a great idea, but I submitted some comments that I would like considered. I don't necessarily want them incorporated, but I thought I made some really good suggestions and I'd like them to be looked at. And that's the reason why I I pulled it and would like it off the agenda.
Are there any other? Let me roll that back. Dr. Hurst, do you want to take that? I'm just going to kind of take that as a question because she's saying why she did what she did.
So what I will share is that we certainly received the the comments from trustee Reckler. Would you like me to to respond as to why we have it on here, or?
Yeah, just take what she said as kind of a question and respond as you see fit.
So so this one right here, what I'll say is, just for clarity for everyone, this is not a new position. What we try to do is to rewrite a job description that's specific to an individual that's doing the work. That's in this job description. We brought it forward because we knew that this was something that a board member was sharing about job descriptions that need to be brought forward. So this particular one, I don't have a problem bringing this off and taking it off and then implementing what trustee Reckler said.
Trustee Reckler, I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to come back to you. If you don't mind, I'm just going to figure out if there are any more questions before we do whatever we're going to do with this. Okay. Smith Folds, do you have any questions?
The recommendations or the added things that trustee Reckler has asked for, are those available to other board members? Did I miss an email? Did I not see it? If you're going to include it, can that be made available to other, to other board members, please?
I haven't seen it. I'm just going to respond. I haven't seen it. Trustee Reckler, do you want to just say what these things are, since we're having a public conversation?
Sure, I'm happy to do that. So I asked that sort of the management of internships and jobs, summer internships and jobs be looked at that are career related, college related. I I asked about maintaining and updating college and career handbooks. I asked that the job description refrain from speaking in code C B Os. I asked that certain other acronyms be spelled out. I asked some questions about the scheduling of college admission groups. I asked some questions about a formal relationship between parents, school and students after high school plans and placements. And I asked some questions about using research methods to identify college and career choices and building and maintaining solid relationships with college admissions offices and trade schools. So once again, they were suggestions I'd like to be considered. I'm not saying do it, but I think I made some suggestions that I'd like considered.
Okay, trustee Smith Folds, did you hear all that?
I heard it. I think that if trustee Reckler is asking for us to give the superintendent direction to consider those things or to add those things, I think that we need to discuss that, correct? Because she's, trustee Reckler, you're asking for us as a board to give the superintendent direction to look at the information that you provided for him. Is that accurate and to incorporate it?
No, that's not what I asked. I asked not so much for the board, but for the superintendent. I mean, you guys can weigh in if you want to. And I guess really what I'm asking is that those considerations get taken back to be looked at.
So you're asking for the superintendent to take back your recommendations, look at them, and if he so sees fit to then incorporate them and then to bring the contract back to the board? Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct. It's not a contract, though. It's a job description.
The job description, excuse me, the job description back to the board. Okay, Mr. Phillips, I think that's all I have.
Okay, are there any other questions? Okay, I'm just going to ask a quick question just for clarity. Dr. Hurst, did you actually consider these suggestions or recommendations?
We have not had a chance to really talk about the recommendations, but as I shared, we don't have any problems going back and looking at those recommendations from trustee Reckler and then bringing them back. We don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so this is what I'm going to do, trustee Reckler. I'm going to make a motion. And I usually don't do this, but I'm going to make a motion to table this item. And the purpose of the motion, because it's not really a motion to discuss, but the purpose of the motion is just so staff can consider your recommendations. And then for the next board meeting, you guys could bring it back, but that's the purpose. So making a motion to table, is there a second?
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, it was moved by myself. It was seconded by Reckler. This is not a motion that we debate. We just vote. Trustee Reckler, you want to start?
Reckler, yes.
President Phillips, come back to me, please.
Okay.
Christian, yeah.
You you say yes?
Yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Smith Folds, yes.
Trahill, yes.
Phillips, yes, the motion carries. We're going to go on to item C nine, which I believe, Reckler, you pulled, right? No, no, what?
Yeah, that's correct. I pulled that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So this one, I just wanted to take it off the agenda so that I could have a chance to have a one-on-one conversation with Dr. Hurst about this position, but really more about the structure of the position and just some things I wanted to understand about the organization of academics in general. And I also and that's it. Thank you.
Thanks so much, trustee Reckler. Just to share with the other board and the public, I did send some information in the Friday letter about this, and I had the opportunity during our two-on-threes just to share with you about this position. So I just really wanted to clarify. First, I would just say and acknowledge that what we want to do, certainly, we know that the reorg chart is a fluid document. And one of the conversations I engaged with a board member is we really want to use a current structure that we have to sit down with our board members and to really go over that document. Some things have changed slightly. This is one of them. But what I will say, when I first came on board, if you all remember in the conversation, the board approved certain positions in moving forward. There were three executive director, I'm sorry, four executive director positions that were approved by the board. That has not changed. So we have two executive directors of elementary. We have an executive director of secondary. And if you remember, the board also approved an executive director of integrated youth services. The concept at that time is that we would have that executive director supervising some staff that was very similar to student services. What we have learned is that we have personnel that are skilled. And we understand also that they don't need that supervision, and we do have student services still available to our students and our staff here. But what we have found from the equity audit is that there is a need for those individuals just working in the teaching and learning or curriculum instruction department that are siloed. That was a finding from the equity audit. And so how do we build a cohesive team so that we're supporting students, student learning? And how do we have that supervision structure in place as well? So what we did was we repurposed the executive director of integrated youth services. And we recognize the more important need to move our organization forward is really getting rid of the silos, those directors being supervised by an executive director that will report to the C A O. I have confirmed with our new interim C B O, C B O, that this position is budgeted and has always been budgeted as we had shared with the board initially when I started. So the the structure, really, and what I want to sit down with the board and share with you at all departments is you have this chief academic officer that is working to support teaching and learning across the entire district of curriculum instruction. And she has a core team of people that are working with either principals or working, supervising the work around academics and the directors. So the three executive directors work with principals. As you already know, two of them are elementary, one of them is secondary. And then this other one that was approved by the board would be an executive director of curriculum and instruction who would directly report to our chief academic officer. And they would have direct reports of all of our directors. One of the things I certainly am committed to, and I share with trustee Reckler as well, is I'm certainly committed to looking at my current structures that I have in place with all of you, all of the board members, and really letting you see the visual, the visual of how everything is laid out for teaching and learning or curriculum instruction, but also all of our departments. And we want you to be able to see that. So I just really wanted to clarify for all of you, that's really the intent, is really to build a system and structure where we're moving teaching and learning forward. There's been no new positions that has been created, other than what the four positions that the board approved us to move forward with initially. So I just wanted to clarify that. We will be setting up time for all of you to see the large reorg visual.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hurst. So what we're going to do now is we're going to do questions from board members, and we're going to start in a normal order. And we're going to start with trustee Reckler.
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Smith Folds?
I don't have any questions.
Christian?
No questions.
Uh, Dr. Hurst, so if we were to table this job description tonight, would it have any large negative effects on the hiring or on the system itself, or could we just table it again for another week?
I would just say, sir, I prefer not to table it. I know we tabled it the last meeting. I would like to move forward. And really, for me, being here for six months now and trying to move the organization forward, there's certain things that we certainly want to get in place and get started and get moving. So I would like to not table it, and I would like to move forward since we tabled it the last meeting, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Trahill?
Uh, no comments. Thank you for questions. Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Board, is there a motion?
President Phillips, I would like to move this item.
I'll second that.
Okay, it was moved by Gonzalez Hoi. It was seconded by Smith Folds. Board, is there any discussion? Okay, so I see discussion. Just go in order, please.
Would you just repeat the motion, please?
Say it again?
Would you please repeat the motion?
I just asked for a motion, and then I heard so moved. So I just assumed it was the item, but but please clarify what the motion is, sir.
Yeah, the motion is just to move this item and approve this.
It's to prove it. Okay, thank you.
And trustee Smith Folds, that was your understanding as well?
It was.
Okay. All right. Um, do you have any more discussion, trustee Reckler?
I don't have any discussion. I'm ready to vote.
Uh, you guys just go in order. If you have something to say.
No discussion.
No discussion.
What I just wanted to say is that I do want to acknowledge, you know, trustee Reckler wants to discuss this a little bit more. So, you know, Dr. Hurst, if you could, you know, please give her space to bring up whatever she wanted to bring up to you. I do want to acknowledge that, you know, she was asking us to table, but we're taking your recommendations, so I want to make sure she does get her questions answered. Thank you.
I have no discussion.
I have no discussion either. Trustee Reckler, can you start the vote?
Absolutely, Reckler. No.
Smith Folds, yes.
Christian, yeah.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
Trahill, yes.
Phillips, yes, the motion carries. We're going to move on to item C eleven, which is governmental relations professional services contract with capital advisors. And this item was pulled by trustee Smith Folds.
So, Dr. Hurst, I pulled this item because we had a conversation about this in our two-on-threes. And I I was uncomfortable voting on it in the consent item. And I was uncomfortable voting on it in the consent item in our consent calendar. So I, my vote has not changed. We had this brought to us before and I voted no before and I will still vote no on this, but I would like the opportunity for you to talk to me more about what the out, if this passes, what the outcomes of this we're looking at, what is, what are we able to see? What's the tangible items that we're looking at? I would like to know more about this, but my vote still stands as as a no, but I would like to have conversation with you about it.
Absolutely. If I may just share my experience being here, just recognizing the need of resources, supplies, including human resources. And I think I've shared with every board member around one of my responsibilities and roles is to put myself in front of individuals, groups, and really advocate for our students and for our teachers and our employees for just that resources. Think when I came on board, I shared with everyone quite transparently that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And we don't have the financial resources, as we know, to do everything that we need to be done for our students, for our schools and for our employees. So I have committed to being in front of groups like C T E group and sharing their vision around C T E and trying to garner support so that we can implement that vision or that part of the vision. I've also made strides in putting myself and staff in front of funders as well. And again, share gaps of our needs with the ask of how can you support us? I've talked to even board members about our need of having a grant writer and really putting myself in front of people that can make that happen and support us as well. So I see this group the same way. It's another opportunity to put myself and others in front of people at Sacramento at the Capitol. And for us to advocate a platform. What I will say is that the platform is our decision. When I say ours, that means the board and myself. We get to develop a legislative platform together. And we have this organization that can help us do that as well, capital advisors. And we get to decide what the projects are going to be as well. I think one of the things that we've done, even at the C S B A conference, is have a conversation with one of the members of this group and we talked about potential projects. And I've mentioned to you, I think all of you, one of the pieces is attendance or declining enrollment and how that impacts us and what conversations can we have with people at the Capitol who are advocating our legislative platform. So to answer your question, what will be the projects? We can decide what our legislative what our legislative platform will be. And then that organization will put us in front of people that we need to be in front of so we can advocate for our students and our organization. I think the measurement piece is probably going to be an ongoing conversation between myself and you, the board. As we define those projects, we need to sit down and get very, get very clear on what those measurements will be as well for success or indicators for success. But that's how I really see this trustee Smith folds and and board that we're working on this legislative platform together and getting in front of the people to advocate for our students and employees.
And I think for me, Dr. Hurst, one of the things that, one of the things that calls me pause is because we don't have it yet, right? And I don't want to hire someone to tell our story and hold that pen until we can tell them, this is the story I need you to say, right? This is what, this is what you are. This is how you are to present W C C U S D, right? So if we had that first, then, okay, I can see where now you're having someone to go to advocate and to do. It's just, it always causes me pause when someone else may have the pen before the story is ready or may have the opportunity to talk about us or our district or our site or who we are before we are sure that we can trust what they're going to say. You know what I mean? So that's kind of some of the things that I'm thinking just in this process because we are paying for it. And because we're paying for it, I when they start getting the money, I want them to start doing the work, right? So if we haven't made the decision about what our story is yet or what we want, what story we want to be told yet to them, I think that we're putting the cart before the horse, right? I think that this kind of company is always going to be a available to say yes to getting paid. So if we put this off until we had our story ready, our narrative ready, and then put it in front of them. Now, you may tell me that there's time sensitive. You know, the legislature happens here and this is when they're listening to that. And that's a conversation that we can have to give me a little bit more of an understanding of why the urgency around it is now and how quickly we're going to act on getting our story together. But that's one of the reasons why, again, because I don't have those answers, I can't write the check without knowing tangibly, this is what I'm going to get for that money. But again, I'm open to hearing everything that you have to say and what you just told me now and what you explained to me in the two on three gives me more of an understanding. Thank you. That's it, President Phillips. No more questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Other now what we are going to do is ask questions. So if board members do have questions, you don't have to ask questions. I'm just, this is just an opportunity to ask questions. So we'll just start in the beginning with trustee Reckler. If you have questions, fine. If you don't, that's fine, too.
No questions, just comments.
Smith Folds, do you have any questions?
My questions were answered. Thank you. I just have some comments.
Okay. Mr. Christian, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Gonzalez Hoi?
No questions. I just have a comment. Thank you.
Trujillo?
I have no questions. Thank you.
I have no questions either. So now can I have a motion to approve this item?
I'll move it for approval.
A second.
Trusty Reckler, if you don't mind, I'm going to switch the, the, I'm going to have you guys switch, if you don't mind, and have him approve it just because it's something that we're bringing back. And I'm going to have you second it. And so just so this is right. Dr. Hurst? Because I don't remember, is this exactly the same contract as last time or is it?
It's the same contract. The dates change a little bit. The pricing is the same. But if you remember the first contract, I think because it was early in the year, it had this condition for the first three months, it would be two thousand five hundred, if you remember that. This one doesn't have that piece because we're now close to the January. So it was supposed to go up to thirty six hundred beginning in January. So now we're there. It just says thirty six hundred.
But it really is the same contract?
It is. Yes, sir.
Okay, so this is what I'm going to do. I'm going to do a couple of things. And I'm going to win a couple of votes. Okay, so board, this is really a motion for reconsideration because it's really the same contract. Now, normally what would happen is you would do your motion for consideration in the same meeting. This is clearly not the same meeting. Okay, so the first thing that I'm going to do is I'm going to ask for a motion to essentially suspend our rules to allow us to take this back up. Okay? This is, this motion is going to basically take four of us because this is not a regular motion. Okay? So my first motion that I am making is that we suspend the rules to allow us to take this back up. Is there a second for that?
A second.
Or you know, matter of fact, you want to do, you want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion to suspend the rules.
Okay, and I'm going to second it. All right. Board, is there any discussion on this particular motion? Okay, seen none. Trusty Reckler, can you start the vote?
Reckler, yes.
Smith Folds, no.
Christian, yes.
Gonzalez, oh, yes.
I abstain.
Phillips, yes. So this motion carries. Now, can Mr. Gonzalez, will you want to make a motion to approve this item?
So President Phillips, we don't have to move for reconsideration because we're spinning rules.
To move for reconsideration? I mean, we just, the motion that we just made was to suspend the rule so we can reconsider it.
Okay, okay. Yes, I'll move this item.
Reckler, second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Board, is there any discussion? Okay, I see one person. So let's just go in order. I see two people. We're just going to go in order, starting with Reckler.
Yeah, I absolutely support this. We absolutely need representation in Sacramento. There is not a doubt in my mind that we need someone in the room working on our behalf when legislation is written, not a question. And he can reach out when, at the appropriate times and he can tap us, he can tap our community, he can tap our superintendent and we can get up to Sacramento and prove our case. Other school districts do it. There is absolutely no reason why we should not be in that room. This contract is so unbelievably cheap with a one month cancel if it doesn't work out. I mean, this is just a no brainer. And there are big decisions coming. There is this whole discussion about A D A and what we do. There is a whole discussion about Prop ninety eight. Cola, there's a whole discussion coming about ten billion dollars and what to do with it. There's a whole discussion coming on Calpers and Calsters. And the most important thing is the loss of students and what that would do to us. It would be devastating, devastating. Nancy Skinner, who's our representative, is chair on the budget committee. A relationship needs to be formed between her and Dr. Hurst. Mr. Gordon can do it and we need to be represented. That's that is it. He is very skilled. He's been around a long time. And they, they make results. So we, I'm, I'm all for trying this.
So my comment is that the amount of the contract, the money that we're spending is the, it's relative. If it's a lot, if it's a little, it's still money that we're spending. There's still a, we still have the obligation to say this is what we expect for what we're paying for. And, Dr. Hurst, I really do believe that it's dangerous to not be clear about who we are and what we're trying to tell people to take our story to. Do you, you know what I mean? Like, we need to have that information first. I have no doubt that our story needs to be told. I think our story does need to be told, but I think we need to know what the story is. We need to know what we are trying to say to whoever, what we are trying, who we are. And this is what we got from everything that's been coming back to us through the equity audit, through the conversations. It's who is W C C U S D? What is W C C U S D's way? I'm not asking for this to be put in a box of, we're never going to have our story told to Sacramento. We're never going to get it out there. We need, of course, we need to have our story told. But we need to make sure we have the story to tell and the narrative to tell. And we need to do all of that before we start paying a dime to anything because dimes add up. And the one thing that we know in this district is we don't have enough dimes to do the things that are already on the table for us to do. So what I'm asking for is just the order. Get the story first. Come to the board and let's have a conversation about what's W C C U S D way, what our platform is, what we're going to ask of these people. And then we hire these people. We already have the story and they get hit the ground running day one. That's what I'm looking for. And I'm looking for the tangibility behind that. It's, it's not that we don't need a lobbyist. We need to make sure that we know what we're telling them to lobby for with us. It's just an order issue for me. It's an order issue for me. Don't pay for something until we're ready to reap the rewards of what we're paying for. That's the issue that I have. So, Dr. Hurst, it's for me, as soon as possible for us to start talking about that narrative, start talking about that platform, start talking about that story. Then it would be more comfortable for me writing that check of thirty six hundred dollars now a month instead of two thousand five hundred. I had a problem when it was two thousand five hundred. I'm definitely going to have a problem when it's three thousand six hundred. And that one thousand one hundred dollars makes a whole lot of difference in a whole lot of people's lives in our district. So it does matter to me. Thank you, Dr. Hurst.
Mr. Mr. Christian?
Yeah, thank you. The only thing I was just going to say is, you know, you know, time is moving, you know, and you know, we need the resources and we, we have to launch out into when you have faith, we trust. We have faith. You just got to move forward. So you got to launch out. There, there's a, there's a launching out into the deep. You know, that, that's the scripture, launching out into the deep. So we need the resources. We got to look at different venues because going into the new year, you know, we got to look at you know, making sure our kids, our students, our district is thriving and moving forward and surviving. And then, you know, making sure people are being taken care of. You know, our employees and everybody. So, so we got to look at the, a bigger picture of a lot of things. So we got to really launch out into the deep. That's faith. Faith.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to explain a little bit of why I am personally changing my vote on this one. So everything trustee Reckler mentioned is true, but I think that also right now in the pandemic, there are so many priorities and advocacy happening in the state, right? And there's a lot of need. The reality is that we do need to have large advocacy in education right now in the Capitol because with all these colliding priorities, education has to be one. I do think that in the next few years, all large urban school districts are in a lot of trouble if we don't have real change on how we look at A D A, how we look at budgeting for education. We are not the only school district that will be in a lot of trouble if we don't look at how attendance is done, like trustee Reckler mentioned. I think that as a group of five, this is one of the things that unites us is that we do have connections locally and even in the state, and we have to start uniting more and stepping up our advocacy. I was talking to trustee Christian about this. We have a lot to offer, a lot of expertise, and we do have to start showing up more. The reality is that we do need someone who can guide us in doing that together and can start opening doors for us because I think that we have a very compelling story in West Contra Costa. And I think that compelling story on this board. And I think that if we have someone who's opening the doors for us, I think legislators will really listen on what our needs are and changes that need to occur in education. The one thing I would say of capital advisors is that I do expect that, you know, like you mentioned, Dr. Hurst, right, that the platform is, is done together. I have seen some of the advocacy that I haven't fully agreed on, on some items, right? So just that if our name is given, that it's something that we completely back because we do stand obviously for some things, right? And some things we don't. So I look forward to working with them and I think that, you know, I really look forward to, for us five to work together with, with, with you, Dr. Hurst, and then to, to doing larger advocacy that we honestly have not had a chance to be able to do this year. Sorry, and I'm voting yes.
Mr. Trujillo?
I don't have any comments. Thank you.
We are broke. We're broke. We're broke. When I put that out, we're broke. If I knew how to say it in another language, I would. We get our money from the state, the most of it anyway. And in order for us to get the money that we need to pay for the things that we need to make sure that our children have the things that we need for all the employees that are watching to make sure that we don't lay you all off, we need to bring in more resources. For a while, I have been talking about impending financial crisis. People call me melodramatic. They call me all kinds of different things. It's here. Our superintendent said earlier in this meeting that staff next week plans to bring a recommendation of a negative budget certification. That means, in layman's terms, that the district cannot pay its bills in this year or the next one. This year again, or the next one. Now, we've been through this song and dance before. That means budget cuts. That means layoffs. That's what that means. We need to do everything that we can to bring additional resources to this district. I think the term is something like a pound foolish and a penny wise. That's us right now. If paying these folks $36,000 can get us in the rooms that we need to be in, that we all know we need to be in, so we can do more in this district than just keep the lights on, that's what we need to do. It's not on the agenda tonight, but anything that we can, we need to, to, to fire up the 7-Eleven committee so we can start utilizing these underutilized properties. We are behind. We should have did this 10 or 11 months ago when staff first brought it to us. But you know what? Sometimes in this life, we get a second chance. And this is a second chance tonight, and I thank board members for reconsidering and allowing this to come back. Please don't make the same mistake again. Please vote for this so we can start doing the work that we need to do to bring additional resources to our district. So all of those teachers that we talk about, we love, and all those janitors that we talk about, we love, and all those aides that we talk about, we love, and all those counselors that we talk about, that we love. So we don't have to lay them all off. All those programs that we say our children deserve, so we don't have to cut them all. This is real. I wasn't making it up to scare you all. It's here. And now we have a decision. Like Mr. Christian said, are we gonna step out into the deep on faith? Or we're just gonna watch this happen to us? I say step out, and I'm voting yes. Trustee Reckler, please begin the vote.
Reckler, yes.
I'm gonna tell you why I'm voting no, and, and I have the right to do that. We are broke, but we also, when we get money, we misuse it. So that's one of the issues we ought to talk about too, cuz you get money and you misuse it. So that's why we stay in the same position that we're in. I don't build an airplane in the air. I don't build an airplane in the air. I think that's crazy as all get out. Build the airplane on the, on the ground, test it, make sure it can fly. I don't walk out on water, because I know I'm not somebody who can walk out on water. What I walk out is in a boat to make sure that we have an understanding of what we're paying for. That's not, I'm not paying for faith. I'm paying for somebody to do what they need to do and what we're asking for them to do. Like I said before, I'm not saying this is not some lobbying that we need to do. I'm saying there's a time and a placement we need to do it. If we 12 months behind, then the, this should have came back to the board with a doggone plan about, we should have been talking about what's the legislative plan that we want to take down there. So we didn't do that. So I am voting no.
Christian, yes. Gonzalez, so yes.
I abstain.
Phillips, yes. Thank you, Board. The next item is F1 Educator Effectiveness Grant.
Good evening, Board. Okay. Don't project behind me. Okay, there we go. So West Contra Costa Unified School District has been fortunate to receive educator effectiveness grant funds in the amount of $6,728,023. This comes from Assembly Bill 130, Chapter 44, Section 22, which essentially renewed the educator effectiveness block grant funding for central county offices of education, school districts, charter schools, and state special schools to provide professional learning and to promote educator equity, quality, and effectiveness. Funds are allocated on the basis of an equal amount per certificated and classified full-time equivalent as reported in the California Longitudinal Pupil Achievement Data, CALPADS, and the California Basic Educational System SEBIDS for the 2021 fiscal year. The funding rate is available at educator effectiveness categorical programs, which are also linked on the board documents. Funds may be expended during the 21, 22, 22, 23, 23, 24, 24, 25, and 25, 26 fiscal years, five school years. The educator effectiveness grant may be used to support professional learning for certificated teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals, educators, and certified staff. Funds may be expended for any of the following purposes. Coaching and mentoring staff serving in an instructional setting and beginning teacher administrator induction, including but not limited to coaching and mentoring students, mentoring solutions to address local needs of teachers that can serve all people populations with a focus on retaining teachers, and offering structured feedback and coaching systems organized around social emotional learning, including but not limited to promoting teacher self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationships, and responsible decision-making, improving teacher attitudes and beliefs about oneself and others, and supporting learning communities for educators to engage in a meaningful classroom teaching experience. Number two, programs that lead to effective standards-aligned instruction and improve instruction and literacy across all subject areas, including English Language Arts, History, Social Science, Science, Technology Engineering, Math, Mathematics, and Computer Science. Item three, practices and strategies to reengage pupils and lead to accelerated learning. Strategies to implement social emotional learning, trauma-informed practices, suicide prevention, access to mental, mental health services, and other approaches that improve pupil well-being. Practices to create a positive school climate, including but not limited to restorative justice, training around implicit bias, providing positive behavioral support, multi-tiered systems of support, transforming a school site's culture to one that values diverse cultural and ethnic backgrounds, and preventing discrimination, harassment, bullying, and intimidation based on actual perceived characteristics, including disability, gender, identity, gender expression, language, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, or sexual orientation. Item six, strategies to improve inclusive practices, including but not limited to universal design for learning, best practices for early identification and development of individualized education programs for individuals with exceptional needs. Instruction and education to support implementing effective language acquisition programs for English learners, which may include integrated language development within and across content areas, and building and strengthening capacity to increase bilingual and belligerent proficiency. New professional learning networks for educators not already engaged in an education-related professional learning network to support the requirements of subdivision. Instruction, education, and strategies to incorporate ethnic studies curricula adopted pursuant EC Section 51226.7 into pupil instruction for grades seven through 12 inclusive. Instruction, education, and strategies for certificated and classified educators in early childhood education or childhood development. Again, the funds that we'll receive are $6,728,023. After consultation and meeting with educational services and our team, we developed a plan in which we are, are taking or looking at Strategies Two and Seven, aligning it to LCAP Goals One, Achieving Students, LCAP Goal Two, Thriving Employees, in which we would like to offer three district professional development days annually in June and/or August. And the focus will be on summer professional development institutes. The first bullet is around culturally and linguistically responsive early literacy curriculum and instruction, systematic instruction in phonics, culturally and linguistically responsive secondary literacy instruction focused on academic discourse and complex text, balanced literacy curriculum and instruction for TK through 12, designated and integrated ELD curriculum and instruction, TK 12, social emotional learning curriculum and instruction, TK 12, and trauma-informed restorative practices, TK 12. This would be $1,125,000 annually over the next five years, which would equal $5,625,000 over a five-year term. So annually, we would spend $1,125,000. And this would be specifically for teachers. For the next category, we chose EEF Priority Number One, aligned it to LCAP Goal Number Two, Thriving Employees. In this one, we really wanted to focus on a teacher induction institute. We know we have typically 250 new teachers every year, and we want to ensure that our teachers receive professional development as they come in. And so the teacher induction institutes are designed to support and retain diverse talent reflective of our, of our school community. Institutes will support our new staff in building their capacity to provide culturally and linguistically responsive standards-based teaching and learning experiences for all students. We will continue to build our professional learning system to expand the capacity of new hires and to support West Contra Costa Unified School District's five-year retention goal. West Contra Costa Unified School District will provide an annual two-day induction program for our new educators with an emphasis on culturally and linguistically responsive curriculum and instruction, balanced literacy, social emotional learning, and new teacher support. We typically, as I stated before, have 250 teachers annually, and this would include two-day summer induction institute. For the next category, we really want to focus on EEIF Priorities Three, Four, Five, Three, Four, and Five. And this would be in alignment to LCAP Goal Number Two, Thriving Employees. Again, we really want to ensure that we're providing professional development for our classified and paraprofessionals who are supporting our students day in and day out in the classroom. So we have allotted funds for that as well. We have looked at one to two days of summer professional learning focused on positive school climate and practices and strategies that reengage pupils and lead to accelerated learning, which would equal about, we would have $478,023 over a five-year term. And that is the conclusion of how we have looked at spending our educator effectiveness block grant funds.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Board, do we have any questions? Okay, I see hands, so we're gonna start with Reckler, just go in order.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. For those of us who are not educators, are, are there proven research-based strategies that improve educator effectiveness? Are there particular studies or particular strategies that stand out to you as educators?
There are multiple strategies that you can improve in, in terms of an educator. You know, you could focus on data analysis, professional development, communities of practice, cycles of inquiry, one-on-one coaching, observation and feedback. There are multiple strategies to improve as an educator. However, we believe and study shows that strong professional development actually is one of the key levers and drivers for improving teacher practice.
And how did your team decide on these particular subjects for educator effectiveness? Like, what did you see in the data? What did you?
Are you specifically asking about the bullet points around what we want to focus on during the institutes?
Yep.
Okay. So when we started looking at our STAR data, the STAR data actually indicates that 80 to 90%, if you look at the second grade STAR data, 80 to 90% of our students do not have foundational skills. So in terms of the early literacy and the phonics, that is the reason we really want to focus on that. If you have, and you're interrupting TKK first and second in terms of the foundational skills that are needed for reading, then you'll have better indicators of success in which our third graders are now readers. That is one of the key levers in terms of why we chose early literacy and phonics. Through the complex text and academic discourse, that's been a conversation from our high school principals that they have felt that they have often been left out of the professional development and really want to develop their practice and also ensure that their teachers are focusing more on complex texts. The Eds and myself do learning walks in schools twice a week, twice a month. And we also do them once a month with principals. And we have seen that academic discussion and really ensuring that our students are engaged in high-level discourse is needed. And we have also seen that, ensuring that our students are using our resources and that our teachers understand the importance of the text being complex and the rigor. We've also seen that as a need. When we also look at our IAB data and our reading data, only 35% of our students, second through 11th grade, are readers. So that says that we really need to focus on early literacy and reading comprehension. That would also include balanced literacy, which is, which was also discussed in the equity audit, that we need to look at balanced literacy across the entire system. In terms of ELD curriculum and instruction, we are currently in the process, based on the county stating that we do not have designated ELD. We are currently in the process through a committee of looking at adopting a different, adopting ELD curriculum for our K through sixth grade students. And because of that, we know that we need to ensure that we have professional development for our teachers. In terms of the social emotional learning curriculum and instruction, that was purchased this school year, and there was not effective professional development unless a principal provided that at their school site. So what we want to do is ensure that we are offering that at a district level to all of our teachers, so that all of our teachers will have the training on any curriculum for social emotional learning that they're using at their school site. So it won't be dependent upon the school to provide that professional development. We will have it here. And I think, as we've seen, we need more support for our teachers to deal with the trauma that our students are coming to school with. So we felt it was important that this be one of the areas that we focus on during professional development as well.
How specifically are you gonna measure success? How specifically are you gonna measure success? What metrics are you gonna use?
Currently, right now, we have the STAR inventory. We currently have IAB assessments that we use, and we also have an SEL screener. The SEL screener was recently just administered, so principals have not had the time to actually.
I'm sorry, if I could just redirect, but specifically to this training, how are you going to measure effectiveness? I think the things that you're describing are more broad and might be affected by many different metrics. Of course, it all adds up, but specifically for this.
Right. We haven't dug into that yet, but the Ed Services team is actually developing a vital signs scorecard in which we're actually going to be looking at the specific teaching practices, leadership practices, and organizational practices that we want to see. I think one of the things to recognize is when you're talking about professional development around phonics, we need to be very clear as a system around what we expect to see in a classroom that's different from phonics professional development. And we are currently in the process of developing that plan. We've actually started talking about what are the teaching practices that we want to see. No matter what curriculum you're using, there are specific strategies you should see. On the vital signs scorecard, that would then mean that principals, myself, and executive directors would be walking schools and actually monitoring to see implementation of those specific practices or strategies that we've discussed and agreed upon as a system.
And then can you change these allocations over the years?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Can you change these allocations over the years? So let's just say classified and paraprofessional professional development. You've got four hundred and seventy-eight K over five years.
Yes.
Let's suppose you decide to change your mind, be like, oh, no, we need to dumble a lot more into that and cut, you know, professional development days. Do you have the flexibility to do that?
Yes, we do. The state just requests that we have the public discussion and that we adopt before December thirtieth. So for us, this will come back to the board on December fifteenth. But what the state also says is that you can make changes and move allocation of funds around, even after the grant has already started.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Trustee Reckler. Trustee Smith-Bolt.
Some of the questions I have is, does this line up with the strategic plan that's gonna be brought to us by the equity audit? Dr. Hurst, is this lining up? Like, we have this money. Does this money line up with the strategic plan that's gonna be brought to us because of what we find out in the equity audit? Or is this first, and then we're gonna line it up towards this? Is my question clear?
Yeah, I think just based on what Ms. Martin was saying, we may have to bring it back and adjust some things. So we're just starting those conversations around our gaps and developing the strategic plan, so it may have to be adjusted.
Thank you for that. The second question is, where is race and equity in here? Specifically, where's race and equity training, professional development for teachers? We did this whole race and equity focus last year. Is that focus going to be presented into this? Is it in here, and I'm not seeing it? Maybe that's a better question.
No, there's nothing that specifically names race and equity. We do have, you know, restorative practices, and we do have culturally and linguistically responsive teaching and learning, things that we're gonna focus on in terms of phonics and complex texts, and just what are the texts and materials that are being placed in front of students, and how are students engaging with those texts that come from different and diverse backgrounds? But there's nothing specifically in here that names race and equity.
Also see that we're looking at the plan alignment is with LCAP. Was there any alignment with the resolution, the African-American resolution?
Well, the trauma-informed practices and restorative practices, and really a focus on social emotional learning curriculum and instruction. But no, nothing that specifically just names that this is aligned to the resolution, but many of these items are actually in the resolution.
And then under thriving adults, what about, oh, sorry, thriving employees? Is there mention in there about the hiring practices, under thriving employees? Is that something that's going to be looked at?
It can be looked at. That is not necessarily how the funds are used. The funds are specifically for professional development for educators, but that conversation can happen alongside HR. It's definitely a conversation that needs to be had, but it can happen alongside HR, but the funds cannot specifically be used for that.
And do I see any mention of special ed?
No, there is nothing in here about special education.
Can you tell me why there's nothing in there about special education, professional development? Is that coming out of a different bucket? Why is there no mention of special ed, professional development in here?
We're just discussing, because there is a professional development plan for special education teachers, so they are not included in this particular plan, but it doesn't mean that they can't be.
Those are my questions for now. I have comments left.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Christian?
No question.
Thank you, Ms. Martin, for the presentation. I have four quick questions. First one, was our teacher induction program, did they participate in the creation of this grant? The department, Ms. Loy's department?
No.
Okay. And then was UTR and principals also, did they participate in the creation of the grant?
The teachers were presented with it at principal meeting, and they were able to ask questions and give input.
Okay, and in these institutes or PD opportunities, is there a component for bilingual educators specifically? I saw ELD, right, but for bilingual teachers that are teaching in our bilingual schools and classrooms.
Can I come back to your other question, Trustee Hoy, just for a second, which was the question around UTR?
Yeah, please.
Because I did meet with Conrad, who is our new labor negotiator, and did ask him after I wrote this to bring this to UTR, because I did wanna have a conversation and have them read over it just for their input, because I think one of the other things with this is that we really don't want the professional development days to be something where it's an opt-in. We really wanna have a process in which all teachers have the opportunity to attend professional development. So I did ask him to bring it to UTR and have a discussion. Your next question was around English. I'm sorry, what was your question?
B-clad educators.
Well, this is open to all educators, so there's nothing specifically that's designating that this is, you know, for teachers who are not bilingual teachers.
Sorry, let me clarify. It's more of, is there gonna be a strand of PD specifically for the bilingual teachers? So they can have their own specific PD that's offered, which is, you know, it can look differently, right?
No, we had not thought about a bilingual strand. We did heavily think about the new curriculum, the designated ELD curriculum, and wanting to ensure that we had an opportunity for teachers to engage in the new ELD curriculum.
Got it. Thank you. My last question, for the funding, I'm guessing majority of it, if not all, is to pay for the teachers to attend. So is that gonna be in a form of stipends, or is that gonna be paid per diem?
Well, this is something that I need Conrad to also work on, so I don't wanna say specifically, but what we have thought about currently, the way we allocated this expenditure is around two hundred and fifty dollars per day. So if you're attending a three-day institute, it would be seven hundred and fifty dollars per day. And if you are a new teacher and you're also going to the Teacher Induction Institute, that would also be two hundred and fifty dollars a day, which would equal five hundred dollars. So it'd be twelve hundred and fifty dollars if you went for the full week. So it's more of a stipend, two hundred and fifty dollars a day stipend.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Treheal?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay, this is not an action item, but board members may have comments. We're okay with time, but remember, all the time really belongs to you. So we spend thirty minutes, right, on this, just making comments, then your more general comments that you might wanna make at the end, it's not gonna be time to do that. So let's try to be succinct, and we're gonna start with Trustee Reckler, comments on this?
I do have, I do have a comment, which is that I do think that some more collaboration would be helpful, especially with teacher induction program. I do think that would be very helpful and informative. And that. Is it? Thank you.
I think my comment is around follow-through and accountability. When you do professional development, where's the follow-through, making sure that the professional development just, you're not just sitting in the room taking notes, but where is that looking? How does that look in the classroom? How does that look? How does that walk itself out with our students and walk itself out with our families and our communities? And how's it walk itself out with our teachers? If we're saying that self-care, self-awareness, self-alignment is some of the things that we want our teachers to do, then are we making sure that we have policy that can say, you know what, I need a personal day? Are we making that easy? Are we making it, you understand what I'm saying? Are we making sure that we're not creating barriers to the very thing that we're asking our teachers and our staff to take accountability and responsibility for, their personal wellbeing, their personal health, their way that they thrive as an employee? That's one thing. The second thing is, it's one of those things that trauma doesn't just happen right before school, right? Trauma happens at our schools all the time. If a teacher witnesses a fight that's brutal, they are traumatized. If something happens to one of their students, they're traumatized. Trauma picks its head up in this, in this job, in this profession, in this career, all the time. So again, it's one of those things that when we speak about professional development, sometimes we just speak about it in the very beginning, the very beginning of a teacher's career, the very beginning of the school year, the very beginning of, but we don't follow it all the way through. There's a hundred and eighty-one days plus that we ask teachers to be in front of these students. And that hundred and eighty-one days, they should constantly be developing, but we have to make sure that we're creating that space for that to happen. You can't keep putting things on teachers' plates and expecting them to be able to handle it without giving them the resources and support to take something off, or the ability to be able to do it successfully. And to know that they have the, there's points, there are check-in points, right? We're making sure that this is working. I would like to see how this money is being kinda spread out all over every kind of kid that we have in the district, right? How are we using this money to professionally develop all of our teachers? Because all of our teachers encounter all of our kids. Our special ed kids are our kids. They're in our classrooms. They are mainstreamed into our classroom, and they are our students. So instead, and doctors, I think is one of the things that we were talking about, keeping things in silos, taking it out of the silos, making sure that we're developing all our teachers all the time, right? Because we see now that we have teachers who substitute in all classes, so they should have that training too, right? They substitute for a special ed teacher's class. They substitute for another class all the time. So they should have that professional development and that ability to go into that classroom with confidence that they're still giving the students everything that they need. I do have an issue about that we're not speaking directly and naming directly race and equity. If that's gonna be one of our values, then it's something that we need to name specifically, so it's something that we can show up where the money is. Again, it's using the money for what we say we want West Contra Costa Unified School District to be. I would also say on that same vein, I would like to see the alignment with our African-American resolution. I would like to see how they specifically align to what's inside that resolution and what we're specifically looking for our most marginalized groups of students, and how we are targeting that and centering those students, those sites, those teachers, et cetera. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Christian?
Yeah, I just wanted to say the same thing. We need professional development throughout the calendar year and making sure that the resources and the things are being, you know, being done, I mean, taken care of. So we definitely have to tend to, you know, to the needs. So professional development is very important. So we definitely need to, you know, make sure we do the right thing by putting the resources in the right places.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Thank you so much for presenting and for writing this with your team. I do have some thoughts. You know, we did have a new teacher institute four years ago when we had all that one-time money that was given to us, and we created this really great idea. It was very successful, actually. We had very positive feedback about it, but we learned a few things about it, right? So I really recommend tapping on some of the people who helped organize that one, and we did it for two years. I totally agree with Trustee Reckler. I think that getting Ms. Loy involved in the induction program, they have so much expertise around what new teachers need right now. I also, I know that, you know, this is just the part, the writing the grant. I think as we move into the planning stage, I would really love to see actual representatives of teachers at the table planning this, because to me, it's critical to have the teacher voice in the planning of all this, right? As we can learn from them what they need, as well as what they didn't get when they first got hired. And then, of course, some of our principals, right? I'm sure there's some great principals that can be part of that planning committee for these PDs. I would love to see some separated into strands, if possible, where we dig deep on, for our bilingual teachers, our SPED teachers, right? Where we dig deep and separate lower elementary and upper elementary in these PDs. So I'm sure all that is already in your planning, so I'm probably preaching to the choir. And, but, you know, I think that's one of the things that we learned that we could've done better, is separating and going deeper for people, because sometimes it's, you know, the PD for a first-grade teacher is not the same, or it's not always the same for a sixth-grade teacher, right? And then I would really like to see allocation of time for collaboration for teachers every day of the PD, right? Because if we just provide PD at teachers and don't give them the space for them to implement that PD, it gets lost, right? So I would love also to see that as part of the everyday PD. But thank you so much, and I look forward to seeing and hearing what gets planned for next year.
Treheal?
I have no comments. Thank you.
I have no comments either. We are going to move on to closing comments. Comments from the Board of Education and future agenda items. Board? We're gonna do five minutes apiece. And Reckler, whenever you're ready to go, you can begin.
Thank you. So first, I wanna thank all of you. I wanna thank Dr. Hurst. I wanna thank everybody who's working in our schools. There is a lot going on, and it is very, very challenging now. And people are really, really tired, and I am so appreciative, and yeah, it's a lot right now, especially holding students. It's an extremely difficult week. There's been a lot of social media threats. Everybody's been jumping. The safety of students is taken very, very seriously here. And I, as a parent in the district, I really appreciate it, so I want you to know that. Last week, Trustee Christian and I and Dr. Hurst went to the California School Boards Association Conference in San Diego. I did not know what to expect. I had never been before, and it was great. There were so many classes to choose from, and every single one of them was super high-quality. It was really impressive. So some of the things, I spent a lot of time in financing, not only about how school districts are financed, but what the outlook looks like for the state for the next couple of years. There's some conflicting information out there, but there's a lot of decisions to be made about money, and schools are really struggling right now. Attendance is down, and there are critical decisions to be made right now about how schools get funded. And so hence the capital advisors, but that was really interesting. Another thing that was really interesting was Another thing that was really interesting was I went to a whole program on ethnic studies, AB 101, course requirement that is going to be required. Out in twenty-five, twenty-six, but that was really interesting to hear about how we could possibly implement that. I went to a whole seminar on accelerated learning, which was fascinating. About one district that put together a whole program to accelerate learning, which is keeping kids a great level. And then in implanting some of the things that they might be missing or shaky on, so that was really great. And then trustee Christian and I went to a whole seminar on literacy, having a literacy plan, very informative. And I went to another seminar on incorporating the outdoors in education and all I could think about was Obama. I mean, it was, I was like, we should be doing this presentation. We should be doing this. We could bring our team. We could show how we're using the outdoors, how the building is set up. So one of the things that I came away from is that this district, we should be presenting. There, we have so many great things going on and there is no reason that we can't get organized and get down there and share our best practices too. So anyway, it was, it was terrific, a lot and still processing it, how to use it. Finally, you know, I want to end just talking about Oxford High School in Michigan, catastrophic event on so many levels. You know, parent, children, you know, school. You know, community, it's just awful and that I'm holding that community in my heart. And with that, good night.
Thank you, ma'am. Trustee Smith folds whenever you're ready to start.
I think for me, one of the main issues that I'm trying to wrap my head around is who are we? Who is West Contra Costa Unified School District? We can't have a. Are we the place that talks about professional development and we make sure that we talk about sped? And we make sure that we talk about biliterate teachers and we make sure that we name our most marginalized students and that we name our adult teachers. I don't think I saw anything in there about adult education teachers, what part of their professional development are we looking at? Are we the type of district that, do we understand clearly who we are? I, I just want to make sure that we. Dr. Hurst, that's the thing that gives me the most pause. We say a whole lot, but is that who we are? Is that who we want to be? And if so, does everything we do and talk about go back to who we say we are? We talk about race and equity, we talk about ethnic, what we, we talk about ethnic studies, but we don't talk about race and equity, right? We talk about safety, but we don't talk about race and equity in safety. Like everything that we talk about, it hits on these topics. Like it, we cannot talk about student literacy without talking about students and disproportionality. Or we can't talk about student literacy and we don't talk about dyslexic students and we don't talk about, we can't talk about student literacy and we don't talk about, do students have? What are they coming into the school with? Are they at that number of site words that helped them set that foundation? And if they're not, what do we do about that? Who are we? Are we the district that says all of our students will be reading by third grade and we will do that no matter what? We will throw all the resources at Bayview, we will throw resources at another school, we will throw resources at a group of students. We have to be able to say that and we have to be able to say that unapologetically. This is who we are. If there's a group of students who are not reading at a third grade level at a school site, we throw resources to that till we hit that goal because that's what West Contra Costa is. We are a school that has third graders all reading at grade level. We are a school that does professional development throughout the year, not just at the beginning of the year, not just for first-year teachers. We are a school that supports by putting more human resources behind the things that we know we need to push our district forward and to ensure that we're protecting these kids. We are a district that says black students and we say it unapologetically. We put resources towards our black students. We say it unapologetically that we are, we say biliteracy is not anything to be ashamed of, but stuff to be uplifted. We are proud that we have a, a community that speaks multiple languages on multiple different levels and we honor that. I'm just trying to figure out who we are and we have strategic plans and we have grants and we have, we go to trainings and we do all of that. But if we don't say who we are by our vote on the dais and we don't require us to be who we say we are, it doesn't matter. Our strategic plan has to be implementable. What are we doing tangibly at the sites to say that this is who we are? Are we keeping this community centered? See, for me, that's who we are. And Dr. Hurst, I'm, I'm ready to have this conversation. I'm ready to have the conversation on who we are and what we develop. I'm ready to have a conversation of what we can tell the legislation or whatever it is that we're doing, but I'm ready to have the conversation about crafting our story. And I think one of the ways that we continue to craft our stories, we continue to talk about the items that are important to all of us on the board. So once again, I will list those items that I believe for me and my community and the community that I serve, which is the entire district, believed to be mission-critical items. I still believe we need to talk about adult school. We need to talk about who we are with our adult educators, with our adult school educators. We need to talk about trade school opportunities. We need to talk about period poverty. We need to talk about bringing back our standing reports, centering the community on who we are again. We are a community, we are a WCCUSD who wants to hear from our community. We need to talk about dress codes. Dr. Hurst talks about literacy, I'm talking, I would like to talk about numerical literacy and overall literacy gaps and strategies. Again, equity statement and the enforcement of that equity statement. I think we need to talk about public comment because it lets us know who we are. Are we a district that wants to listen to our public, listen to the public that we serve? I think we need to, we are already talking about the revision of the bylaws in the government handbook. I would like us to set that beginning meeting date and get started and start meeting about the governance handbook and the bylaws. We need to talk about our preschool and TKAs. Are we a district that puts resources to the very beginning of the children's education once they step into this district? Are we that type of district? We need to talk about the transition program and their inclusion. Are we the type of district that includes our transition students? We need to talk about virtual school. If this is the school. I'm sorry, what, Mr. Phillips?
That's time. It's, it's divided evenly so everybody could have the same amount of time. That's time.
Okay, thank you for that. I'm just going to run through the last three things that I have. Remote working, report cards, vaccine.
Somebody else's time. Mr. Christian, it's your turn.
Thank you. I want to say to Dr. Hurst, who pretended, to the staff and to all those who worked diligently hard. You know, through our district. And I just want to say is, you know. You know, as we push through challenges and as we push forward. Want to say is that I made some visits, school visits, which I made a visit to Valley View. And. Well, a few of the trustees and we visited Valley View. Then also we went to, to Deans High School. And then from there, I visited Kennedy High School. And actually, I visited Kennedy twice, yesterday and today. And also I visited L Street High School. And the reason I mentioned all these schools, I, you know, you know, made connections and, you know, checking on, see how things are going. There's a whole lot that is happening on our school sites. And I know that we got to make sure that we. You know, make sure people are safe. I visit King School, checked on King School and also they have a group over there called the Peacemakers. And they're doing a wonderful job over there at King School. Then today also Kennedy had a. I think it was, it was a health fair, but I attended a, a health fair they had out in their parking lot. And it was, it was really nice, even though it was cold, it was nice. Then also I'm going to be meeting with the Kennedy leadership students. Because Kennedy is working on reimagining the school. And so I'm going to be meeting with the students, some of the students soon over at Kennedy. And then also I want to say that last week, trustee Reckler, myself and Dr. Hurst, which she mentioned earlier, the trip down in San Diego. Was able to connect with many people throughout the state of California. Tony Thurman spoke at the conference. Along with many other people who were there. And I was able to attend some of the workshops and gain a lot of information. On how to build, how you, how to build your team, how to build your district, how to get things moving. I enjoyed a lot of the discussions. So it's just a lot of, lot of things, so I'm just excited. And there's a lot more to be done. I just want to say is, you know, with the challenges, we're going to. You know, we, we got to be able to keep our focus on the right things. So. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I just want to say that I wanted to just talk about the vaccines. Last weekend, I was able to go with my wife to the Richmond Auditorium. We did a walk-in to get our booster. It went great. I, I don't like needles, but there was a kid next to me who was being brave and I had to be brave with him. I was sick for twenty-four hours. I feel great. I just want to encourage everybody to go get their vaccine as soon as possible, especially their booster. The Richmond Auditorium allows walk-ins Monday through Saturday, nine, nine AM to three PM. And then we have clinics coming up. Ms. Martin sent us the ones that are coming up, which is tomorrow, December ninth. Baby is having a clinic, eight AM to three thirty PM for students and families. Grant is having a clinic tomorrow, eight thirty to four. Then again, Friday, baby is having a second clinic, eight to three thirty. And Chavez Elementary is having one at eight, eight thirty to four on Friday as well. And Saturday, Paris Elementary is having a clinic, eight thirty to four. I want to encourage everybody to please start sharing that on social media with families, with anyone who goes to our schools. Mr. Ryan Phillips, I do want to give you feedback that I do think absolutely we have to do a paper campaign. I think that we have to send from now until the end of the year, a bunch of flyers home and not just leave it to the principals because they have enough to do. And I think that because they have so many priorities, not all of them are doing it, right? So I think that it has to come from the district. I think that a lot of parents are obviously do better electronically and many are old school, right? So we need to ask our teachers to send those flyers home. So really encourage us to do that, to increase participation on the vaccines. Because I just think that people are just not simply looking at the robocalls and the text messages. And then, let's see, oh, and partnering with the PTAs, I think that's a huge. You know, a part of our organization that we don't utilize enough. So I think they're doing outreach to our PTAs. And we have wonderful trustee Reckler, who was president of the BSA PTA at one point. So she can probably connect you with all the leaders of the PTA so that they can actually do the reach out themselves to parents. We have to obviously do whatever we can to, to grow our reach for vaccines. And I would be happy to partner as well in whatever I can help. To increase our students getting vaccinated. And then lastly, you know, it sounds like next week, we're going to have a really interesting and potentially long meeting where we're going to have our organizational meeting. Choosing new leadership from the board. We are going to have our first interim, which our superintendent just kind of gave us a heads up on what's coming. And then we potentially are going to talk about the vaccine mandate again, right? So it's going to be a heavy meeting, but I look forward to it and I want to thank everybody for another great night.
Mr. Trahill, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. First thing I want to say is, is thank you, of course, to the staff, everyone. Second thing is, I was a little shocked that B six was so controversial on the agenda tonight. I think that the internet is a, is a great thing that we should take advantage of. And the more people who have access to these meetings, the better. So I just don't understand why it was such a big deal to, to pass that resolution. I think it would benefit far more people than it would hurt. Next thing is. I would also like to echo what trustee Gonzalez Hoyer said about paper, the spraying it by paper, mailing. You know, when you get things in the mail, you pay attention. You know, I get all these ads all the time in the mail and coupons for Domino's and all sorts of things and, you know, that stuff. It'll sit on my table, but I will see. There's no doubt. Next thing would be, I want to see more work done to help parents and students upload their vaccine cards. And work as an actual, maybe in person during school or workshops held outside of school, on campuses. Like to do for orientation with the annual forums, it's a similar process. And I think that it would be helpful. I also appreciate the raffle being held. I think that would definitely help encourage people. I mean, encourage me, I'm already vaccinated and plan on doing it anyways, but I want to do it fast before the deadline so I could maybe win a gift card or something, who knows? But it, it works. And last thing. It is, sorry, December, which is, which is crazy to me. December means close to the end of the semester, which means my term as a student trustee will probably end soon. I don't know when my last meeting will be, but I just, it just went by very fast. There's a lot I want to do, but I don't know, hopefully I can still continue to work, you know, with the district in some form. After my term ends. And I wish I did get to see the return of student trustee standing, standing reports. Sadly, I don't think I'll get to see that in my term, but I hope to, you know, maybe future student trustees will be able to serve on this board at a time where maybe student voice is valued just a bit more. But yeah, thank you to everyone again and I hope you guys have a good rest of your week.
It's my turn to speak. One of the things that I've learned since joining the board is that the board and the district can't do everything. And early on, as a board member, people would come to me and they would ask me to do A, B, C, and D. And I would do A, B, C, and D. And I would, people would be so happy with me and they would say, congratulations, and he represents us and he looks out for us. And I would feel like I was accumulating like all of these wins. And people were really excited. What I've come to learn is although that feels good, it feels good for the board member who's accumulating those wins. And although it feels good for the folks who are benefiting from those wins because they feel really represented. Those wins usually don't change the system. They're one-offs. And as long as you're doing those one-offs, everybody's happy, but they never really understand why things change, don't change. We have to get away from all the one-offs and actually begin to really focus on changing the system. Because that's the only way we're going to get lasting benefits for our children. System changes. Dr. Hurst gave us a book, it's called The Four Disciplines of Execution. And I want to take the rest of my time to read an excerpt from it. We have to have a paradigm shift in this district if we are really truly going to change for the good and for the long term. This excerpt begins like this, and excuse me if I read fast because I want to try to get as much of it in as possible. The leader's challenge. So here's the big question. Why is there so much pressure toward expanding rather than narrowing the number of new goals? Even more simply, if you understand the need to focus, why is it so difficult to actually do it? You might say that as a leader, you can always see more than a dozen existing things. You might say that as a leader, you can always see more than a dozen existing things that need improvement. And another dozen new opportunities you'd like to be chasing on any given day. On top of that, other people and other people's agendas are always adding to your goals. Especially if they are from higher up in the organization. However, more often than any of these external forces, there's one real culprit that creates most of the problem. You yourself. In the immortal words of Pogo from the comic strip, we have met the enemy and he is us. Although the tendencies that drive you to add more and more new goals are well intentioned. In a very real sense, you are often your own worst enemy. Being aware of these tendencies is a good place to start. Let's examine a few of them candidly. One reason you may drive your team to take on too much is that as a leader, you tend to be ambitious and creative. You are exactly the kind of individual organizations like to promote. However, creative, ambitious people sometimes lose focus because they always want to do more, not less. If this describes you, you're almost hardwired to violate the first discipline of execution. Another reason you might lead your team to go after too many goals is to hedge your bets. In other words, the more goals your team pursues, the more likely it is that at least some of them will be achieved. It also ensures that if you fail, no one can question the level of effort your team gave. Even though you know that more is not better, it looks better, especially to the person above you. Thus, you may resist the increased accountability for results that would come with fewer goals and instead rely on the sheer volume of effort. To drive your success. However, the greatest challenge you face in narrowing your goals is simply that it requires you to say no to a lot of good ideas. 4DX may even mean saying no to some great ideas, at least for now. Nothing is more counterintuitive for a leader than saying no to a good idea and nothing is a bigger destroyer of focus than always saying yes. What makes it even harder is that these good ideas aren't presented all at once, wrapped up in a nice little bundle so that the distraction they would create would be obvious. Instead, they filter in one at a time alone. Each idea seems to make so much sense that it's almost impossible for you to say no. The more often you say yes, the more you fall into a trap of your own making. We believe all leaders facing this challenge should have this quote prominently displayed in their office. There will always be more good ideas than there is capacity to execute. As a leader of a frontline team, you must be fanatical about ensuring that every individual focuses on no more than one wig. At a time beyond their world when it's counterintuitive, but it must happen if you want real focus. I'm sorry I read that so fast, but I wanted to get it out and I will be repeating this at the next meeting. The next scheduled Board of Education meeting is December fifteenth. And as trustee Gonzalez Hoy said and Dr. Hurst, a lot will be covered. Thank you, everyone, for a good meeting. It is now ten twenty two and we are leaving on time as usual. Good night.